Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Placerville City Council meeting of August 13th. I'd like to ask you all to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all.
Thank you very much, and welcome again. We're getting our new air conditioning system working. It should be a little bit cooler in here shortly. Somebody was commenting that it's so quiet, and I said, "Well, that's because it's not running." All right. We have a lot of business here this evening. We took a meeting off last month, so now we play a little catch-up. I'd like to ask the clerk to please call or roll.
Mayor Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you very much, Regina. Moving on to brief comments by the City Council members. Due to the workload, I will ask councilmembers to please keep their comments short and concise this evening. Mr. Saragosa?
I had a great time at National Night Out. Want to thank all the staff and the community members that took part in that. I had a great time. It was my first time participating as a council member, and just thrilled to see all the residents come out that day, so thank you to everybody.
I guess I'll go. I'd like to echo his comments.
Mike.
Michael.
What's your name?
Michael's comments.
It's been three weeks.
It's been a long time. His comments. We really enjoyed getting out and talking to people, and I'll keep it brief. It was a good time, got some interesting conversations with some neighborhoods out there, so it was good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Councilmember Taylor?
It seems like it's been a long time since we've been up here. I unfortunately missed National Night Out. I feel really bad about it. I had another event with my other job on the calendar. It was a rookie council member mistake, but I've corrected it, and it's on my calendar for next year, so I'm looking forward to it. I hear that it was a great turnout, and I appreciate all the work that went into it. I attended a July Fire Safe Council meeting. I met with Terry Zeller and got kind of caught up on what he was doing, all the projects that he's doing, especially in regards to homeless camp cleanups and brush clearing on city properties. So that was a good meeting. Thank you, Terry. The Cannabis Committee met and certified the HDL score, so we're on to the next phase of that application, which is the interviews of the remaining candidates that scored higher than 80 percent. I attended a transit meeting, and that's about all I have to report for this round.
I appreciate your efforts on the Cannabis Committee. Councilmember Borelli?
Kind of the same thing. And I'm going to just ditto about National Night Out once again. Sure, we're going to get first place again. Ben, thank you. My thanks to everybody, too, who participated.
All right. Thank you, Patty. Yeah, it would be interesting to see what the feedback is from National Night Out this year. I know we went out to Lyons Park for the first time. Moore Workshop has been traditionally the kickoff location for years and years. Of course, they're undergoing an extensive, complete reconstruction of their building, so this year we went to Lyons. It certainly seemed very, very family-friendly, and definitely nice shade trees out there. I would like to thank all the police department staff members that took part in that. It was another very successful evening, and we were blessed with a long visit from our symbolman, Frank Bigelow, who spent four hours driving up from his home down south to spend the evening with us here in Placerville, so we appreciate him coming up and listening to the concerns of the community. So I'll go ahead and move on to item four, closed session report. Mr. Driscoll. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Tonight in closed session, the council considered the claim of Patty Perillo, and unanimously in a 5-0 vote rejected that claim.
Thank you, sir. Any other -- no other comments?
No other comments.
All right. Very good. We'll move on to adoption of the agenda. Before I ask for adoption, I'd like to note that we have a bit of a police celebrity in the audience this evening taking the police chief's place. We have Commander Wren filling in. He is an intricate part of our operation in keeping our community safe, and we appreciate your time in and off the street to be here with us this evening. He's left you with another long meeting. We'll make note of this. Thank you, Joe, for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Moving on to ceremonial matters we haven't done this evening, bringing us on to public comment. I'll begin first with written communication we did receive. In a part of our packets, an email from Jennifer Chapman expressing her concerns for the Sour Dough Company application at the central site on Main Street, and that is an item that will be taken up at another council meeting. We also received a number of other communications. Two of them were related to the fire ordinances, and I believe there was a total of three written communications that are related to item 12.1. Nothing else has come in. I'll go ahead and move on to item 7.2, which is public comment to the City Council. Any member of the public that wishes to address the council on a non-agendized item is welcome to do so at this point. Please limit your comments to three minutes and your subject matter to items that are pertinent to business of the City Council. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized Good evening, sir.
I met you, I guess, about eight years ago for the first time. We were both in the same position. You were mayor, and I was representing my parents, who had been served with a notice about a pole sign, one of any properties affected like that. And as you may remember, it was kind of bizarre. It went on for eight years. The council voted one way, and then after we spent a lot of money, Steve Calfee of the staff comes in and starts all over, and it was like talking to a brick wall. But ultimately, it changed, and how did it change? It's because another council member's family had the same situation. All of a sudden, I was told, "You were right all along." So I know the staff is -- there's nobody with the staff who's not competent, and they're all exceptionally bright, so I don't know what else to explain why it takes a year and a half to get a simple grading permit for spankies. I asked to have a design set out to you to give you an idea of the substantial sums that are being -- to be spent for this project to enhance that property. We were sued by Scott Johnson for ADA compliance issues. We have to grade to grade it. So we've already gone through one winter of waiting. I talked to Cleve Morris a couple times, to John Driscoll, Pierre Rivas, and others, all of whom have had lots of time, a year and a half, to talk to each other. So there must be some way to take out a really stupid provision that I can't imagine you'd want to do, because what does that provision do? It says the city can, with short notice, claim their claim to a right-of-way, which would wipe out all the parking. Now, who's going to put hundreds of thousands of dollars to make improvements in property when it could be destroyed from being able to be used for commercial work? And the city always says, "We live or die based on sales tax." So here you have substantial work that's being done, and the property was paid off long ago, so we could give everybody their 30-day notice and close it up and turn it into warehouse space. This seems like it's in the city's interest. They sometimes give the appearance of going to Great Lakes to help people like Sour Dough and push things through. Here, it's a year and a half. So let's see if you can do something simple. If it can't be done by the time we meet next time, please put it on the agenda so we can figure it out, which is going to happen. That's the reason, because it's a long time to take, a year and a half, to get a simple grading permit. Just get a ballpoint pen and cross that paragraph out, because I can't imagine it was done for anybody else along Placerville Drive. If it has been, great. Show me the documents which I requested last month. I hope you'll give some consideration to that. Again, if it can't be done, next time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close item 7.2. Mr. Smith, the city manager and I will be in contact with you by the end of the week, and we will have a meeting set up. We'll go through the entire year and a half of issues. I'm sure we can come to a quick and agreeable solution. Moving on to item 8, the consent calendar. All items will be considered under one motion unless a member of the City Council wishes to have it removed for further discussion, or a member of the public wishes to comment on one of the items. Is there any council member wishing to remove anything from the consent this evening? Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on any of the particular consent items? Seeing nobody approaching the podium, bring it back to the council. Is there a motion for approval of the consent?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Borelli and seconded by Vice Mayor Saragosa. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Consent calendar is adopted, so we get rid of about a half an inch of paper. Moves us on to item 10.1, to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance regulating the removal of hazardous vegetation and combustible materials in the city of Placerville. Mr. Morris, do you have the latest update on this?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you recall, your last meeting, about a month ago that we had, you suggested some final changes, mostly minor changes that were to be put in the ordinance. What you have before you tonight shows those changes, and again, they are minor, just some correction items that we did in there to clean it up for the final second reading and adoption. So unless there are any questions, our recommendation tonight is that you approve the second -- or waive the second reading and move to adopt the ordinance as noted in the attachment to the staff report.
Thank you, Cleve. Are there any questions for staff? I should note that two of the items that we received this evening, written communication, were in relation to item 10.2 and 10.3. All right. Is there any -- I'll open the public comment on this item. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on item 10.1, which would be the beginning of the final adoption process for the vegetation and combustible materials ordinance? Good evening, Sue.
Good evening, Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. Congratulations. I think we got it.
That's it? I would like to thank Sue for sitting through countless meetings and countless revisions and drafts, so thumbs up from her is a big one. Good evening again, Mr. Smith.
Thank you again. The provision related to attorney's fees says that the court shall award them, and that's unusual, because most attorney's fees provisions provide that it's that the court may award reasonable attorney's fees. There's an old, a couple decades-old Law Review article, to break note, called "Pro Se, Can You Sue?" In California, it's called "Pro Per, Can You Sue?" On Your Own. And it was the idea that a person who represents themselves can get attorney's fees for their own work. Can you imagine what would happen if the city lost, and they have to pay $1,000 an hour, or whatever it is? So there should be some discretion for that. But lastly, the changes that have been made, as I understood, can only be typographical or spelling, and without any redlining or anything like that, it's hard to see what changes have been made. If it's more than just spelling or typographical errors, then that would necessitate having another reading, which I don't think would be bad, because I've been here many times when this has come up, and it was always, "Well, we're not going to start this year. It's going to be next year." And that was said a number of times, so it looks like you would have plenty of time to have it implemented, as you quite suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on item 10.1?
I'm Chris Keeney, Chair of the Placerville Fire Safe Council, and the Fire Safe Council fully supports work by the city on this project. We also appreciate the opportunity that we were given to work with city staff on the draft ordinance, and we appreciate that our ideas were heard and addressed in the subsequent versions. Many residents in Placerville have already started working on their property to reduce fuel loads and harden their homes against wildfire, but we realize that there must be some property owners out there that may remain unaware of the threat of wildfire or simply be unwilling to be responsible. This vegetation management ordinance is how we can get the problems of nuisance properties abated and prevent those from undermining the hard work that other property owners have done to make their home structures and parcels safer and to mitigate the impacts of wildfire in our area. The city is responsible for ensuring the health and safety of the community, and the ordinance clearly states the standards for vegetation removal to create defensible space and states what the consequences are for not doing so. We see the ordinance as a measure of last resort, but also an important tool for our community. The implementation plan that's attached to the ordinance clearly states the approach the city intends to take when nuisance abatement is necessary and shows that the worst cases will be taken care of first, will have the highest priority for enforcement. At this time, the Placerville Fire Safe Council is developing their outreach program to educate and engage more residents in the important work. It's encouraging to see that in the implementation plan, education is a top priority for the city as well. The Placerville Fire Safe Council members look forward to working with the city and continuing our collaboration to improve the community's wildfire resiliency. We do have some specific suggested changes to the attachments for the implementation plan and the guidelines, and we'd welcome the chance to discuss that with staff in more detail if they deem that appropriate. Thank you very much, and thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you, Chris, and thanks huge for your leadership at the Fire Safe Council. We greatly appreciate it. Is there another member of the public that would like to address the council on item
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Marion Washburn, Placerville, also a member of Fire Safe Council Board. I'm going to say what Chris said pretty much, only it'll be shorter, probably less eloquent, but my recognition that the City Council, the staff, and the public really work together on this, that it seemed to me this is the ideal kind of product from a democratic institution, that elected people and professional people got together to do the best thing for this city. I think as difficult as it was to do all the work that it took to put this together, probably the hardest work's going to be in the implementation, because there is so much to do. So again, the Fire Council is there to help as best we can. That is, for people who don't know, that's the citizen volunteer arm of the effort to reduce the fire danger in Placerville, but thank you for your support and your willingness to listen to the public. I think because of that, you wound up with a very sound ordinance, and we will do our best to help you implement that.
Thank you very much, Marion. Again, thank you for your time on the commission. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on item 10.1? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to the council. Mr. Driscoll, there was a concern by Mr. Smith that there have been significant enough changes in the document that it needs to be -- the process for --
To be reread.
Reread. Thank you, sir. What would be your comment on that?
The changes in the document were clerical in nature and not of substance. Things, for example, like building officer was incorrectly typographically wrong. Should have been building official. That was changed. Consistent references to hazardous vegetation was one of the things that was done, and a sentence that was inconsistent, not only inconsistent, but contrary to the ordinance was removed. They're pretty much all clerical, typographical things, nothing of substance, so I don't believe it has to be reread.
Thank you very much.
That number --
I just want to note that these were all noted at the last meeting as part of the first reading. None of this was different from what was done at the last meeting. The other thing I think that was mentioned by a member of the audience was that wasn't sure what those were. They are shown in color. If they were not printed out in color, I apologize for that, but they should be underlined, even if it's in black and white, on the copies that were printed out in black and white. So, okay. I'm saying for one the audience might have seen, though. So those changes should be shown in the ordinance that was attached to the staff report.
And there are a few strike-throughs, and they were present at our last meeting in July, when we had our first reading.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That takes care of those concerns, and then we've heard from the Fire Safe Council their willingness to continue to help us refine this document. We have the guidelines, which I think are a great step. There's probably a little bit of work in that can be done to improve those, to make them a little bit more Placerville-friendly because of the dimensions. We don't have the 100 feet, 150 feet, and things like that, so I'm looking forward to seeing what we can continue to do to improve that, and then there were also the comment regarding the implementation. Is there any comments from the council at this time on this? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a quick comment. I truly appreciate the efforts of the Fire Safe Council in working on this project. I specifically recognize the need to help our community and not just pass an ordinance and have people deal with it. That is -- this is a lot of work, and I've said this before, it's not going to happen in the next two years, like it's been outlined. You know, there's a lot of people that may need their properties evaluated. Actually, there is a lot of people that will have their properties evaluated for -- to deal with, according to this ordinance, and they won't be able to afford it. They won't be able to do it themselves. It's going to be a long haul, not just two years, and I truly appreciate, one, you know, Chris Bane has worked pretty hard. He's procured what, about $500,000 plus to assist in this with -- and I'm not sure what program that is, but I'm sure we'll hear about it more in the future, and all the work that the Fire Safe Council has done to educate and move people forward in this, so I appreciate all that. Thank you.
Did you make a motion?
I will move -- what is the motion?
Well, you're waiving the second reading and moving to adopt.
Yeah. I'll move to waive the second reading and approve this ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded before I call for vote. Are there any other comments from councilmembers? Kara?
I have one quick comment on the guidelines. It refers to the woodland and forest conservation ordinance and kind of refers people to that, and I haven't had a chance to review that ordinance, but I was just curious if anybody knows if they align with the guidelines, or if they're contradictory, because that would be confusing.
I don't think they're necessarily contradictory, but there may be some areas where we may come into conflict in terms of if the defensible space ordinance or the vegetation management ordinance requires trees to be moved. I'm looking at our director, Rivas, over here, and the woodland and conservation ordinance, forest conservation ordinance, says you can't remove them.
Right.
There is a potential conflict that we will have to be aware of and deal with. When we look at that in the guidelines, we are going to work on some language to clarify that and help out with it. Pierre, anything to add to that?
I would just add the comment that typically I believe that staff would have the ability to allow for the removal of a tree if it's deemed hazardous, even if it's in conflict with the city's own woodland conservation ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Patty, did you have any other final comments?
No, but you know what? I'm just going to say this now instead of later on. The Fire Council is going to meet this Thursday night. They meet the third Thursday of every month, and it's at the Veterans Memorial Hall. This is a meeting only, but they really, really, really need more people to join them, so I would encourage anyone that's interested in this and wanting to give input and help out to attend that meeting on Thursday night at the Vet's Hall at 5:00. 5:00 or 5:30? 5:30, okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Patty, for bringing that. Very important. We need to keep this momentum going. Vice Mayor?
Just a quick, a couple of quick comments. I love the fact that we have now the guidelines here. You know, within those guidelines, there are parameters, and I think that gives our enforcement officers the opportunity to look at two pieces of property and be able to say, "In this property, you know, we're going to have to do something different." And so there's some subjectivity in there that I think is helpful, because I had mentioned before, I thought being overly prescriptive was just going to be a recipe for us not being able to make enforcement, so the guidelines are a helpful tool, I think, not only for the residents, but also for our enforcement officials as well. And again, I want to thank everybody from the Fire Safe Council and to all the residents that have come out to give us feedback on this and to give us really good suggestions on how to make this a better document. And I know we're still going to probably do some upgrades on the guidelines here, but I really want to thank staff for getting this all put together as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I will just echo the same comments, and just making a note here, hopefully what we can do is, as we improve the guidelines, we can lean on something that is frequently missing, and that's the use of some common sense as we go around and apply these things. We don't need to take somebody's Japanese maple tree out of their front yard that's surrounded by a green lawn, so we'll make sure those kinds of things don't take place. And also, as far as the implementation plan, Cleve has kind of -- you've got this through on the first blush without much conversation, and I think that's great, and I have a feeling that we'll have a better feel for this as we get into the beginning of the new year, and we'll see what the remainder of this year has done and the insurance industry, and we'll probably want to have that agendized to have the council look at. Because as Dennis said, this is expensive, hard, time-consuming work. Some of these parcels haven't been touched in decades. This fuel load just didn't appear because there was a big bad fire someplace. We've got a lot of housekeeping to do, city property included, so we've got a heck of a great start. I'm glad we were able to use the time of year to our advantage, and I'll thank the Fire Safe Council and the community for all the various meetings that we'd have, our fire district for all of their input, our friends over at CAL FIRE, and also our police department, because they helped us take a look at things that we needed to be concerned about so that this would be an enforceable and useful document. So quite proud to get this done. I'll ask the clerk to please call or roll.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Again, we are on our way to getting this done. Cleve, when does this become law of the land in 30 days?
Yes.
Getting nodding heads. September the 3rd, I think, is the -- okay, anyway, September. Great work. Look forward to having the Fire Safe Council continue to work with us to refine this and make it a very workable document. So, all right, we'll move on to item 10.2, adopt an urgency ordinance pursuant to Government Code Section 36937, amending Titles 3 and Chapter 3, 2, and 3. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Items 10.2 and 10.3 are related. As you recall, at the last meeting, we brought a draft urgency ordinance to you to look at and suggested bringing this back for adoption in two ways. One is to adopt it as an urgency ordinance, and 10.3 to follow as an item that will be adopted as a regular ordinance, in the case that, for some reason, we were challenged on whether or not we can adopt it as an urgency ordinance. So what you have before you tonight is that ordinance, and before you, also, you received some comments from Tom Cumston, and those comments are suggesting some changes to those, and I think, John, should we read through those changes? We're staff and the city attorney are in agreement with those changes. We also received some changes from Sue Rodman also. We have those, and you have those, and we are in agreement with any of those. You want to comment?
The areas where both Sue Rodman and Tom Cumston commented were pretty much the same areas, and I've showed the comments from Mr. Cumston to Sue prior to the meeting, and I think she's comfortable with those. So what I'd like to do is indicate what Mr. Cumston's comments were, and a couple of them Sue did not comment on, but I think she's comfortable with those as well. One of the areas had to do with who you get the permit from, and I've got to admit, I also looked at my permit like Sue looked at hers to figure out, "Who do I get this permit from?" And Tom had some language with respect to that that I think probably covers it very well, and I'm trying to get my copy of his comments to where I can -- Yeah. Okay. The first one, right. Tom suggests that we have the period where open fires are prohibited from May 2nd, or when burning is declared prohibited by CAL FIRE, and whichever is later is what the draft says. Mr. Cumston feels it should read earlier, not later, or we could have a situation where, as we did during drought, CAL FIRE prohibited burning in mid-April, but the city would still be allowing it. So the earlier of those two would trigger it, either May 2nd or when CAL FIRE prohibits it, and that's Mr. Cumston's suggestion. I think it's a good one. The reference to the Air Quality Resource Board should be to the air -- The reference to the Air Quality Resource Board should be to the Eldorado County Air Quality Management District in Section 3-3-2C1. The next area that Mr. Cumston commented on was that replace Section 3-3-2C2 with the following language. All open burning within the city of Placerville shall be subject to the burn permit requirements of the Eldorado County Air Quality Management District and the Eldorado County Fire District. And then lastly, I think it's a good suggestion, although in the ordinance, we have a, a portion of it which talks about when you're exempt. And one of the situations when you're exempt was when you are on property that you have control over. You have to have, if you're not the property owner, you have to have the right to, legal right to occupy that property. Mr. Cumston suggests we also add a provision to the ordinance that it says it shall be unlawful for any person to ignite, permit, or maintain an open fire within the city of Placerville at any time without the prior written consent of the landowner or their agent. And I would suggest that that would go at the end of subsection C of 3-3-2. There are items 1, 2, 3, and 4. This would become 5. And actually, what I would do is I would move 4 down to 5 and make this 4 a suggestion there.
Okay, say that again.
Okay. What I would do for consistency's sake is take subsection 4, which says, any violation of this ordinance shall be deemed a misdemeanor, make that 5, and insert in a new section 4, Mr. Cumston's language that I just read about it being unlawful to any person to burn, basically, a fire in the city of Placerville without the prior written consent of the landowner or their agent. That's all clear as mud, I'm sure.
Take your word for it.
But I am, I am comfortable with those changes. I think they're good suggestions. A lot of the changes tend to be comments similar from both persons.
Okay. So you, okay. Very good. Mr. Morris, did you have any additional comments?
No, I just wanted to mention, you know, it's unfortunate that we're doing this kind of on the fly here, but I do want to stress the urgency and the importance of being able to adopt this as an urgency order for the health and safety of our community, because there is a real fire danger in the community that we need to be aware of, so.
Thank you, Cleve. Any questions from the council at this point before open public comment?
Yes. When it comes to item, what is that item? Section 3-3-2, in those, the part where it talks about May 2nd. I, I still don't understand why we need to supersede CAL FIRE when they, when they are clearly, clearly more qualified than we are to determine the closure, the burn permits, and that date certain. And the confusion that it would cause, because you call, because as, if you do burn piles on a regular basis, you call the burn day hotline, and it tells you when you can burn and when you can't burn. And I don't know if you're going to get them to say unless you live in the city of Placerville, then you can't burn after the 2nd, or what. But I think they're well qualified to determine that date and just to solely rely on CAL FIRE, Eldorado County's determination on that. So that's, that's my recommendation, that we strike that May 2nd from that and rely solely on the.
As determined by CAL FIRE.
Yeah, I would agree. I was going to be the, going to say the same thing, so. I think that just makes it easier for, for people to understand.
Kara, did you have?
I agree with that point. And then just one other question. Because this is an urgency situation, would it make more sense to apply these changes to 10.3 and leave this one as is so that we can move forward on it? Or would we still be able to move forward on these changes?
Since the urgency ordinance doesn't require two readings, we can make these changes now.
Okay.
And adopt it. The 10.3 is there in case anybody were to challenge the basis for the urgency ordinance. So I think when we get to 10.3, we should make the same changes in it that we do in this one.
Okay.
Good point, Kara. Anything else? Patty, did you have any comments at this point?
No, I agree with every, I agree.
All right. Very good.
I see, I, I'm not sure if the changes are reflected in what Tom Cumston brought forward, but a valid, you don't need a burn permit from the Air Quality Management District unless you're burning a pile over four feet. And you don't.
Unless you're burning a what?
A pile, a big pile over four feet. And the, and the, and the word "and" is used, a valid permit from the Eldorado County Fire. So you only need, you only need a burn permit from the Eldorado County Fire and not one for the Air Quality Control Board, unless you're burning one over four feet.
You got him, you got him.
I think his comments address that, however.
I wasn't up with you all the way on that.
It says "and" the Eldorado County, so you would, you're required to have both permits even if you're burning a small pile.
While we're deliberating, I'm going to, I see Eldorado County Fire Chief Lloyd Ogan in the audience, and I'm going to ask him to come up before I open public comment as a part of the expert, if you don't mind, sir. I have a couple of questions for you. One is, this ordinance, some of these have been, they constantly refer to the Eldorado County Fire District issuing the permits. And at one time they did years ago, the Placerville Volunteer Fire Department issued burn permits. Chief, would there be any problem now? Is it CAL FIRE that's really the one that issues these permits now in the city of Placerville?
So both of us enter, both of us issue the permits in our district. So in the city of Placerville, it's going to primarily be us.
Okay.
Because it's, it's the local response area, so it's going to primarily be the Eldorado County Fire Protection District.
Okay, very good. And then do you see any issue with following the CAL FIRE determinations for opening and closing dooryard burnings?
So that made me smile, because that actually makes it easier for us to just make it that simple.
Yeah.
If we just say, base it on CAL FIRE's ban on burning, it makes it simple for us to enforce it.
And CAL FIRE is looking at not only our local conditions, but conditions up and down the state and how they may be affecting their equipment that we have no idea even exists, but they're globally looking at the state and the fire issues and opening and closing that burning with that in mind, correct?
Yeah, that's true, except for, in addition to that, the AAU unit chief takes into, into account all of the parameters that exist for our local county and our local unit. So not only are we looking at statewide, we're also looking at what are the local factors that control it. So I think that adds an extra level of protection.
All right, so we've got, we've got half of them right. One final question, and that would be, for example, this year, Sue Rodman didn't catch this one. You can go online to CAL FIRE and get a CAL FIRE permit. Took me about one minute to get it printed out at home. And I had my address, and they knew, they knew right where I was. So that permit is, I read mine unlike Mr. Driscoll, and it is, you know, in my, hanging by my burning equipment. So, so would it be best to have our ordinance mention the fact that we can obtain them from both agencies to be, to make sure that we're being inclusive?
That gives, that gives an extra level of application.
Mm-hmm.
So if you go to a CAL FIRE station or a Eldorado County Fire Station, you can get a permit.
Or.
Either online or in person.
Okay, great. Thank, Chief, I appreciate it very much. Hate to put you on the spot like that. I know you weren't agendized for this item, but your expertise is greatly appreciated.
No problem.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mayor, if I could.
You've got it all figured out now.
Yeah.
We'll open public comment in just a moment.
So the new, the new language, to replace the language that says or requires a permit, would say, all open burning within the city of Placerville shall, shall be subject to the burn permit requirements of the Eldorado County Air Quality Management District and the Eldorado County Fire District. So it doesn't say you need a permit unless they say you need a permit. So it, it would fit, so.
Okay, good. Simple is better. All right. Thank you for this input. At this level, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment on this item. This is an urgency ordinance to prohibit any open fires in the city of Placerville beginning immediately through to the end of fire season. Is there a member of the public that wishes to address the council on this item?
First of all, you can't get a permit really from the Air Quality Management District, but you better have a CAL FIRE permit, whether you get it from the county or you get it from, you can get it from any of the CAL FIRE stations, or you can get it from the local county office, either one. But you better have it if you're going to light off a fire as soon as, I mean, you've got to have permissive burn day, but as soon as CAL FIRE says you've got to have a permit, they will tell you when you call for permissive burn days with a permit. So you've got to have your permit in hand as well as have a permissive burn day. The permit does not come from the Air Pollution Control District. It comes from CAL FIRE. But you need to have it. My comment is that Air Quality Management District doesn't really issue any burn permits, but they regulate when burning is allowed. CAL FIRE issues residential burn permits, and it's CAL FIRE that regulates how the burning is to be done. And they coordinate with our county fire department. They both run on the same track. the open burning. I, I still like my, my declaration here of all open burning within the city of Placerville shall be subject to a declaration of a permissive burn day on any day proposed for open burning by the State Air Quality Resources or the local Air Pollution Control District. And right on your CAL FIRE permit, it gives you the number to call so that you can get it. anyhow, I like, I like what the language that Tom Cumston has, has suggested. I think that works well. But I really think we need to be really clear that you must have a valid residential burn permit if you're going to do open burning in the city of Placerville. Now, the Air Quality Management District does not always require a burn permit if you are within the area that before CAL FIRE requires a burn permit. So when you call the Air Quality Resources Board, they'll tell you, you know, you don't need a burn permit yet. But I also think it's a good idea to take out that May 2nd, because this May, we had three inches of rain in May. So they didn't require permits until after that vegetation began to dry out. So anyhow, we do need to get this ordinance in place, I think, so.
Thank you, Sue. We appreciate your hard work. Comments are noted. Another member of the public wishing to address this item. Good evening. If you could, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Kathy Lishman. I was kind of surprised. I know this is an emergency ordinance. I was kind of surprised there wasn't a PowerPoint presentation or just a presentation for, to go over this for the public. And also, I want to mention while I'm thinking about it, the Eldorado County Fire Safe Council just recently received a grant from PG&E for $150,000 to help low-income seniors and veterans do defensible space on their property. And Friends of Seniors has an application on our website. It doesn't actually say for veterans too, because we're for seniors. But at www dot friends of edc seniors dot org, there's a flyer and an application. Because the PG&E money was kind of slow in coming, there's kind of a, a long list of people that have submitted applications. But I think it's really important for the city to know and for neighbors to know that maybe their neighbor qualifies. We really, it's for low-income seniors who can't do the work themselves. The other thing I was going to say is about this open burn permit, and you know, I know that there are people that like to burn on their property, but I still think that we live in close proximity to each other, and, and it's not really healthy when someone's smoke comes into your house. And I would love to see burning not allowed in the city. It's important to educate the public about this. I imagine there are people who don't even know you have to get a permit. And if there was a link on the city's homepage of where to get your permit, that would be helpful. And with people, more people doing more work on their property because of the vegetation ordinance and their insurance companies, there's probably going to be more burning.
Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on item 10.2? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. The object of this is, is an urgency ordinance to get us through the end of this year. A lot of this work, though, is really going to be helpful for item 10.3, and it's also probably very timely that it's cleaning up the whole burning process and what you have to do, because this has been commented on. There's likely to be a lot more of this as the clearances and insurance companies notify folks that they need to make some significant changes. Comments? Changes, questions, a motion?
No, I just.
I think maybe we should ask Mr. Driscoll to.
I'm going to follow through with Kathy, and you know, it is, and I, I'm kind of, where I'm living is kind of like in a canyon, and whenever people burn, it just all comes in my house. And I don't know why people are allowed to burn when it's kind of raining outside, and it, all it does is smoke. And it's, it's really irritating, and I, I agree. I wish something could be done about that. But anyway, I will make a motion that we, with all the changes, are we going?
I wanted to.
Oh, I thought you said you wanted to make.
Well, I did ask for one. Comments down at this end? I wanted to get a little bit more clarification on CAL FIRE. Appreciate the comments and the recommendations from the chief that we go with the CAL FIRE declaration. And again, this is also going to jump to the next item, 10.3, that we use their open and closed dates for burning season. They're the experts. The idea that you can, and I'm glad the chief clarified this, you can still get a permit that says Eldorado County Fire on it. As I said, mine happens to say CAL FIRE on it this year. So we probably should reference that a permit from either agency is going to be required. And the clarification is the Air Quality Board doesn't issue permits. They're the keeper of the burn day. And, you know, that's based on a lot of regional weather information. Though it's a two-step process. The, some of the questions I heard related to burn projects, and that is a whole different thing than a four-by-four pile in your yard. So this is not, this and the next item is not dealing with that. So that would, that would, along with all of the, the work that Tom Cumston and Sue Rodman have put towards improving this item. Did we have it, did we have it such that we could draft, that we could hear it back, Mr. Driscoll?
Sure.
Or just the, just the main changes?
Let me get my, let me get my copy of the ordinance up.
Just for, I'll, I'll second the motion, just so that we're.
Thank you, sir. So been moved by Councilmember Borelli and seconded by Vice Mayor Saragosa to go ahead and approve this urgency ordinance to ban all burning effective through the end of the burn season this year.
With change.
With the changes, as are being outlined here in just a moment by staff. And just for clarification, somebody's wondering why we're spending this time on this in August. It's to allow us to have complete and thorough control over burning that's taking place, I'm afraid, probably nightly. People that are camping out on trespassers. Our police department, the last two fire seasons, I know, has been working very closely with Station 25 to keep this town from going up. These folks are deep in large parcels on hillsides, and until this ordinance goes into effect, we don't have an effective way to make this a serious citation. So that is the purpose of the time that we've spent on this this evening. You ready?
Yes, yes.
Great. We appreciate it. Please go ahead, sir.
The first change would be in Section 3.3-2 and subparagraph B, where it would read that it shall be unlawful for any person to ignite, permit, or maintain an open fire within the city limits. within the city limits, within the limits of the city of Placerville, from when burning is declared prohibited by CAL FIRE until the date CAL FIRE declares by proclamation that the hazardous fire conditions have abated for that year. The rest of the ordinance is the same. Rest of that language in that subsection is the same. The next one would be in subsection C of that same section. Paragraph 2, parentheses 2, would be changed to read, "All open burning within the city of Placerville shall be subject to burn permit requirements of the Eldorado County Air Management, Air Quality Management District, and the Eldorado County Fire District." And then we can add here if you want, "or CAL FIRE," which picks that up.
Sure.
And then in that same subsection C, subparagraph, existing subparagraph 4 would become subparagraph 5, and the new subparagraph 4 would read, "It shall be unlawful for any person to ignite, permit, or maintain an open fire within the city of Placerville at any time without the prior written consent of the landowner or their agent." And I think that's all the changes.
All right, sir. Question, John?
Just quickly, I think there was one more, John, in C1, just changing the title of the Air Quality Resource Board to the Eldorado County Air Quality Management District.
Correct.
So in C1, that title would be changed.
And Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Clary-Chi. On the purpose of the ordinance, should we strike out the, there's a reference up there to May 2nd, and there's references to fire chief. Should we clean that up so that we, because purpose is going to stay in as a body of the document? On page, on page one of the staff report, under purpose, we have...
Are you referring to the ordinance or the staff report?
It's the staff report.
Okay.
Does that, have we gotten it out anyplace else? So that's not noted anyplace else?
Yeah, it's not in the ordinance anywhere else.
Thank you very much.
That's just in the staff report, and that's been corrected.
Very good, then. All right. So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Let's see, this is an ordinance, I'm going to say it's a roll call vote.
Yes, it is.
Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll on it?
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, so the ordinance is adopted immediately. Is that correct, Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, it is.
All right, very good. And I would like to again thank the Placerville Police Department for their efforts in working with county fire this year and in the past fire seasons to have prevented several incidents that I'm aware of that could have been massive disasters. Now we have, we have new teeth. Okay, so hopefully some of the work that we just did on 10.2 will carry over to help expedite 10.3. Cleve, would you like to introduce the item?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Again, as you stated, this item is, the actual ordinance here is identical to the one that you acted on in 10.2, and our recommendation would be that the same amendments be put in place in this ordinance under 10.3, and that you waive the first reading and introduce the item.
All right. Are there any questions from council at this point? Thank you, Cleve. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on item 10.3? Mr. Morris just recognized this is, this is an actual ordinance process. It will take 60 days to go into effect. Same language that we just discussed. So good, we worked through that. No member of the public wishing to comment on this? I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for action.
I would move that we adopt 10.3 with the same language as 10.2.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilmember Taylor, seconded by Councilmember Thomas for adoption of item 10.3. This would actually be to introduce the ordinance and waive the, waive the first reading. Is that the intent of your...
Mm-hmm, and waive the first reading.
That's so. And the second stands? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Gotcha, huh? Thank you very much. That's actually some very serious work. I'm glad we got those three together like that. They're going to make a huge difference, I hope, into creating a much safer community. It's going to take a lot of hard work. We're far from finished with these issues. All right, moving on to item 12.1, discussion and action items this evening, to find the proposals submitted by the Eldorado County Historical Society and the tribes of the non, to be non-responsive and therefore not under consideration for review. Mr. Morris, could you introduce the staff report, please?
I could have Mr. Zeller do that.
Oh, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Zeller.
Good evening. Hopefully, it's a little cooler up there than when we started.
We're moving right along, sir.
Just right.
Good. So, good evening, council, City Manager Morris and Attorney Driscoll. The staff report before you requests two actions. The first is to find that the Eldorado County Historical Society and Wapumnas Nisan, Nisan and Miwok Tribe proposal be non-responsive and approve the schedule for presentation and for possible selection of the single conforming RFP. Just to give you some context, I received two proposals on July 31st. Arts and Culture Eldorado's proposal came in at 11:00 a.m., and the Eldorado County Historical Society and Wapumnas Nisan and Miwok Tribe proposal came in at 3:07 p.m. The deadline was 3:00. So aside from the second proposal being late, it was also not sealed in an envelope. At 4:30, an envelope was delivered to our office, and the respondent asked my staff to put it in the envelope, but it was too small. So we have held on to that envelope also, but it was blank. I later discovered that the thumb drive with the envelopes drop off was in the envelope that was dropped off at 4:30. I had stated in my letter at the time I wrote it that I didn't see a thumb drive, but there appears to be one with the proposal, although it came in late. So looking at the actual RFP, section 8 of the RFP clearly states a 3:00 deadline. It also states that the proposals need to be in a sealed envelope that's clearly marked, and it does give direction on what should be on the envelope. Paragraph 5 of that section clearly states that submittal requirements will be strictly adhered to, and proposals after 3:00 will not be accepted and will be returned unopened. Since the proposal wasn't sealed, I did my best to treat it as if it was sealed. I did not read the proposal or look at the envelope. That's the reason for the late discovery of the thumb drive. Since the time and format were both not met, I've got no choice but to recommend a non-responsive rejection. I did go ahead and send out a letter of rejection on August 2nd as I was out on the first, recovering from Route Canal. My letter was shortened to the point. I understand the city clerk received a letter of protest within the time period prescribed by the RFP, and I believe that was also in your packet for tonight. It was five pages, it had a lot of content, but as far as I could read in taking a look at it, I didn't see any rebuttal of my findings as late and non-conforming. So in my view, this letter did not address the finding non-conformance. So that's about it for summary. Jumping to options on the staff report, the council can approve the staff recommendation to find the proposal from Eldorado County Historical Society and Wapumnas Nisan and Miwok Tribe as non-responsive. Thereby, it would reject it from review or the opportunity to present and to be considered for award of lease. Or the city can find that the proposal can be considered and direct staff to review for completeness and allow for its presentation at the special council meeting. Right now, the schedule says it's set for August 19th, but I just wanted the council to be aware that they could move that presentation to the regular meeting of August 27th, but it's the purview of the council. Doesn't look like there are any direct costs for either option other than saving some staff time to review the proposal in question. And the RFP process in general was absorbed by our operating budget. So my request is to find the proposals submitted by Eldorado County Historical Society and the Wapumnas Nisan and Miwok Tribe to be non-responsive and therefore not under consideration for review, presentation, or possible award of lease, and to approve the schedule contained in the RFP for presentation and possible selection of the single conforming RFP respondent to eventually enter into lease with the city for Historic City Hall located at 487 and 489 Main Street. I can take questions on my staff report or the letter of rejection that I've sent out, and I could provide comments on the rejection letter also. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate it. Are there council questions of the staff at this point? All right. Any further clarifications from city attorney or Mr. Morris?
If it's the desire of the council, the next step should probably be to invite the applicant to respond according to their, what their protest is, and then at that point, you could open it up to comment.
Okay, that was going to be the question that I was going to ask. This is a fairly unique situation that we're in. It has nothing to do with what was contained in the application. It's a matter of saying that the stated guidelines were not met.
Right.
That's it.
Right.
That's the question.
And I think that you could confine their comments to, basically three items where they were found non-responsive to, which was the time, the fact that it was not in a sealed envelope, and the fact that it did not contain a thumb drive, digital thumb drive of the presentation, or the application which was required.
I thought you said he found it.
But it was late. It didn't come in on time.
At 4:30.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, given that, Cleve, the next item after that discussion would be hearing the actual appeal under 12.1D.
Well, it's all under 12.1. The matter of how you, how you hear that, all I'm saying is that it would probably be appropriate to have the applicant respond to the appeal, why they are appealing, and saying that it should be allowed even though it did not meet the requirements. So, I'll give that back to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Have we had the, have we ever had a bid or an RFP go out where somebody, where we have turned down other bidders or RFP respondents because of not turning in correctly? Or is this a unique situation here?
I'm looking at our city engineer, but I'm guessing bids that we have had. I cannot say one that I recall in RFP. I know in other cities, I have seen bidders run in the door at 5:00 after the hour, and they have definitely been rejected. It's common practice if they did not meet that timeline, so.
Would the city engineer like to comment on her experiences in the...
Well, I have a couple perspectives of this. Prior to my, you know, tenure with the city, I was actually a private design consultant. And as such, I had to prepare many proposals, and if you were late, they were not accepted by the agency. And it's just a formality, you know, you made sure that your proposal had everything in it. And, you know, in planning for such an effort, it is a lot of effort to prepare a proposal, and I certainly want to, you know, recognize that. And so you take a lot of care in trying to give yourself some time buffer to prepare and deliver those on time. And I have been on the recipient of a rejection from being late. It was either timing, or there was an accident on the way to the agency. So you allow for a buffer of time. The other side of this is I've been on the city side where we have received proposals late, we've had to reject them, proposals and bids. And there is, you know, it's adhered to because it's a fair practice. And that's my perspective.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. After Mr. Morris's comments, are there any questions before I open it up to a public comment on this item? All right. Thoughts on who we should allow to speak on this and the time limits on it? Is there a representative here from the Historical Society that's going to, I see Mr. Payne, and is there a representative here from the tribe that wishes to speak? Or the tribes, I should say? All right. So the question before the council, just a moment, I guess I'll open it up, is, was the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Driscoll, one of the objectives is to determine whether or not the application was late, and the other thing would be to listen to the appeal and see if the appeal has merit.
All right. The council does have the discretion to waive irregularities and can allow the application or the proposal to proceed if you so desire.
All right. Thank you very much. I think that, is that clear what our goal is here this evening? That would be clear for public input as well. So I will go ahead and ask the representative from the Historical Society and/or the tribe to please step forward and state your name for the record and present your appeal to the decision to find the application as being late. If you could state your name for the record, and we're going to just ask for reasonable timeliness. We're not going to put the three-minute clock on. I don't think it would be appropriate.
I appreciate that. In my presentation, I'm going to introduce the other two people with me. Thank you for the time to be able to respond. Good evening. For tonight's letter of appeal agenda item, we have prepared a three-part presentation consisting of myself, Ruth Michelson of Art Studio 360 of Main Street, and Sue Taylor of Herrick and Hangman Tree Buildings 301, 305, Main Street. We've reviewed the city letter of rejection and the city staff report for this item 12.1, and recognize our right to appeal this rejection before the city council, and I appreciate that. It seems strange to be fighting for our continued participation in the RFP process, not in the argument of convincing you that we have the best proposal and should be considered for the award of the preservation reuse of the Confidence and Jane Buildings. All the volunteers participating on our partnership have been struggling to understand how eliminating us is an acceptable outcome for our community. Our competitor will most likely not step up and ask that you waive the technical imperfections in our submittal and therefore allow us to continue to the August 19th special meeting face-off. Why should they? Staff has clearly articulated that we should not be allowed to go on and recommend that our proposal not be accepted because of these technical imperfections. The leadership of the Wapumnas Tribe County Historical Society effort worked hundreds of hours to quantify what is extremely difficult to quantify. We put into words with what until we attempted was not easily explained. It was confusing, frustrating, and seemed not to make any sense. But then, with the deadline approaching, it started to come together, and our proposal started to make, to take shape. Trying to build a plan from scratch with a coalition of groups is not easy, but it started to make some sense, and then we ran out of time and submitted seven minutes late. This is not a contracts matter. This is not a procurement matter. There's no services involved. Yet we are measured by rules that have not been formalized for this type of community effort, but by a contracts procurement methodology by your contracts procurement specialist. From the beginning, it didn't seem to fit. No written guidelines, just a list of things that we were required to submit. One month to meet with boards, committees, and to craft this coalition of somewhat operationally and organizationally different individuals and groups. It wasn't easy, yet it was part of our strategy of providing the best proposal possible for the city. Though rejected when we submitted our earlier proposal a few months ago, we thought the merits of our ideas should be heard and measured. In this RFP, it seemed not to be the case. As listed in the staff report, we approach you tonight and ask you to take action. Reject the staff recommendation and direct staff to review the Wapumnas Tribe Historical Society proposal for completeness and advance it to the special council meeting set for August 19th. At least, that's what we understand. Our letter of appeal has officially been submitted and is now before you as attachment B, posted by addenda. Thank you, Dave Warren, for doing that for us. I believe that you reviewed it, council, and are knowledgeable about its content. Through the comments of... Through the comments of Ruth and Sue, we will summarize the basis of our appeal. And as you can see from my opening, we respect the time offered to us and will be frugal with our remarks. I finish by explaining why we have chosen Ruth and Sue to be part of today's item. Ruth is a former engineer of the County Department of Transportation, knowledgeable about RFPs, and has until this day not been part of the city's RFP process. Therefore, she's been independent, and I ask her to do that review. Sue has made a career of building design, residential design, with many people living in her dwellings. Along with her husband, Tim, has preserved the Herrick and Hangman Tree Buildings and is the chair of the Historical Society Preservation Committee. So, I'd like to invite Ruth to come up and speak for a few minutes related to her participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Ruth Michelson. Actually, it's Plasterville Art Gallery. That's okay. Owner with my husband. And similar to Rebecca Neves, I was an engineer for 18 years and dealt extensively with proposals and contracts and RFPs, not just for the Department of Transportation for nine years, but also with Federal Express and with the phone company. That was my job was contracts and negotiating contract. The first thing I'd like to point out, and I'll be brief, was this RFP directions that were given to the applicants. And I'd like to turn to Section 14, rejection of proposals. I don't know if you have it, but I'll just read you the start section that says that the city may waive immaterial deviations in a proposal. The city may waive immaterial deviations. Seven minutes? Yes. It's very unfortunate, and I agree with Rebecca. A time buffer should have been built in. I don't really know all the details of what occurred that day. I wasn't part of that. And, you know, a thumb drive and an envelope. I mean, this is a very, very big project, and those three issues, seven minutes, an envelope, and a thumb drive, seem pretty immaterial deviations for, for what we have ahead of us in comparing these two projects. Okay, now I'm going to move on to the letter that is in your packet. It should be attachment B, which is the, the letter of appeal. And I'm obviously not going to read it to you. You can all read. But what I'm going to do is just highlight what I think are some of the most relevant points in this. You know, our appeal isn't just simply what Cleve had stated about, you know, the time, those three things I mentioned, but it's a bigger issue of the whole process. And what we feel, as again, I'm going to just summarize the bottom of the first page, our protest alleges that the city is in violation of Public Contract 1100, which specifies this to clarify the law with respect to competitive bidding requirements, for compliance with competitive bidding statutes, provide all qualified bidders with a fair opportunity to stimulate competition and to eliminate favoritism, fraud, and corruption. Okay, moving on to the second page of our letter, in the middle of the second page. As an applicant, we requested by this applicant the RFP Guidelines Handbook. There was no response to this request. Couldn't find it when we Googled it. And it's a legislatively mandated RFP process by the state of California. There was no bidders conference to explain the draft RFP line by line. Okay, moving on to the third page. There was some lack of clarity in the deliverables. The applicant wasn't able to ask questions. There was an amendment to the RFP that, and that was never posted online. There was an extension of the deadline for asking questions, but the overall submittal deadline was not similarly extended. Moving down to the bottom of that page. The RFP was released July 1st with a submission date of July 31st. You know, you have one organization, it's a single organization, that can comply with a really, really fast turnaround of a month. This wasn't the same RFP as the first time that was submitted. There were different requirements in this RFP. And you're talking about a community cooperative of many organizations that have to pull their boards together to get approval, very, very tough to do in 30 days. And now on to the last page. Well, I've already mentioned that. The important, and I, to, to close, the importance of competitive bidding stems from the California Constitution and more than 150, 40 years of California Supreme Court procedure, including all payments on contracts violating the competitive bidding laws, et cetera, et cetera. The, and in closing, the Wapumnus Nissan Miwok Heritage Society of Eldorado County and the Eldorado County Historical Society have proposed, in the first RFP cycle, should receive the same city support and consideration to compete as the other applicants with superior city-assisted resources. We ask, in the name of the public good, that the city council not reject our proposal and allow us to continue uninterrupted towards our immediate goal of presenting our proposal in front of you and the public. And this is not really scripted, but something else I want to say. And, you know, you have one group that has a lot of experience in doing this type of thing, and has had a lot of advantages monetarily and with staff. And you have another group where this is relatively new. And I am not suggesting that it's discriminatory to not help this lesser group, but I'm just going to say there's the appearance of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Good evening, Sue.
So, I'm Sue Taylor, Preservation Committee Chair for the Eldorado County Historical Society.
Sue, could you pull the mic down? Excuse me. Thank you.
Can I start over?
Go ahead, start over.
I didn't have my inhaler today. My, my wind's not there, so. I'm Sue Taylor, the Preservation Committee Chair for the Eldorado County Historical Society, whose mission statement is, our mission is to honor the people who came before us by rescuing, preserving, researching, and displaying the county's rich history to ensure that its significance will be appreciated for generations to come. From the very beginning of the RFP process, I felt that the Wapumnus Tribe and the Historical Society, being longstanding entities within Eldorado County, are the best suited to be involved with repurposing these buildings. I was attracted by the preservation responsibility inherent within this partnership. I felt my experience in building, preservation, and my connections to resources would be of benefit to the project and to the community. Being awarded grants is an important element of a successful project, but having the community's support is vital. As Ruth has generally mentioned about the RFP process and his example, I believe that Section 6, 41B of the RFP was confusing to our team. Early on, I had submitted to our group what I thought was a structural timeline and work plan that would be understandable to the reviewer of the RFP. Unfortunately, my information did not fit into the structure set up by the RFP. This section was asking for generalized funding actions, scheduling plans, and permitting and construction details, all in the same requirement for information. The conflicting question was not revealed until we began to decipher of that section, the deciphering of that. It made no sense that a funding strategy was merged with a requirement for construction documents. To conclude, basically, the Arts Council had technical and grant support over a period of time due to the earlier partnership with the city that increased their ability to provide the technical reports for a plan to turn these historical public use buildings into a new cultural center with apartments. This will be a major change to the use of these buildings and inconsistent with the mission of the Historic Society. On the other hand, the Wapumnus Tribe and the Historical Society did not have a partnership or grant support from the city for their proposal to preserve the historical use of these buildings for a Confidence Fire Museum and eminent Jane Interpretive Visitor Center. This proposal has overwhelming support by the community and other longstanding organizations such as the Plasterville Downtown Association, the Gold Rush Fire Brigade, UC Davis, the Eldorado County Fire Protection District, the Haintown Marshals, the Georgetown Historical Society, the Grand Grove of the United Order, Agent Order of the Druids, who actually occupied one of these buildings at one time, Heritage Association of the Eldorado County, Native Sons of the Golden West, Kit Carson Mountainmen of Amador County, and others. With such community support, please do not dismiss the opportunity for the community to have a choice in the future of the Confidence Hall and Immigrant Jane Buildings. Allow us to continue being part of the RFP process and work towards the August 19th special meeting. With our knowledge and partnerships, we would like to participate in the preservation and restoration of these historically significant buildings in a way that the city and certainly the community would be honored. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sue. Appreciate your comments. Chris?
So, in closing, then, I thought it was pretty unique that on, on your staff report at, at the very top, this is the city manager report for this date. Terry Zeller, Director of Community Services, item 12.1, is the, the words, "Plasterville, unique historical past forging into a golden future." I thought that was pretty interesting, that you do that every time you have your agenda items, I believe. And, and, and so, we, we believe that we should continue to be participant with the city in this effort, and we feel like it would be, it would be a shame if we didn't have that competitive spirit going into August the 19th. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to be able to speak about our feelings related to this matter. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And we appreciate your concise and timely presentation by all three of your speakers. At this point, are there any questions? Since this is kind of like the applicant's portion of a hearing from the council on what's been presented? I think so. Okay, straightforward.
Are we getting more public comments?
Oh, yes. Yes. Okay, so now, we've heard from the appellant, so I'll go ahead and ask if there's another member of the public that would like to address the city council on item 12.1. And we will now engage the, the three-minute rule for our speakers and ask them to please state their name for the record. If you could pull the microphone so I can be sure to hear everything you say. Thank you.
Francesca Duchamp, Polly Kleins. Again, I am not part of either of the proposals, but I am aware of all the paperwork. With the meeting that was thrown out, the original one, what's interesting to me is when I read what this gentleman had written, I requested a public, I guess it's a public law that I can request emails and documents and stuff from the city. And they did a beautiful job. However, when you're talking about things that aren't coming in on time, I was very patient because somebody got sick, somebody left town, a stick was ordered and didn't arrive. And so, when this is not a contract, it's the same thing. It's a law that I'm entitled to information that I request. And it took a long time, but the point is, is I didn't threaten anybody, I just accepted that somebody got sick, somebody left town, and a stick wasn't delivered. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Another member of the public wishing to address the council on item 12.1?
Hi, Jennifer Chapman, Plasterville resident. I just want to, you know, for the record, there was a deadline of June 1st this year, 2019, that the city had. And it was a deadline from a three-year extension on the Clay Street Bridge project to complete the environmental planning. And I understand federal highways had also not received any, this was already a three-year extension, hadn't received another request for an extension. And, you know, they have lots and lots of bridge projects. This, this is, you know, millions of dollars of funding for something that wouldn't qualify for this program today. And so, you know, we've got a functionally obsolete bridge. It's not structurally deficient, and, and these funds would not be available if you applied to this, for this project today. So, but, I mean, my basic question is why you feel like federal highways should not worry about the fact that you missed that deadline?
Jennifer, do you have any comments related to the issue before us, which is the appeal?
The issue is about deadlines. The issue is about, about, you know, what goes into these major projects and, you know, what, it's procedural versus merits. It's all that stuff. And so, I'm just asking, again, on the, on the subject of deadlines that other people have commented on, their experience with deadlines and whether or not, you know, they've made deadlines and whether or not they've been allowed to continue. And so, I'm asking you to make your case about why you feel like, you know, that deadline that was missed should be waived.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing a gentleman in the rear coming forward. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm John Clarici. I am a resident voter, taxpayer, property owner in the city of Plasterville. This is easy. Okay, this is easy. You have one choice, and that is reject this thing. If, if you take the totality of everything that this group has done, all the missed things, all the messed up stuff, everything, what we just heard, what level of confidence should any resident of this city, and therefore, like myself, a one ten-thousandth owner of that property, have that these people would ever deliver anything in terms of a project? Because I don't have any confidence in that right now. The fact of the matter is deadlines are deadlines. And my guess is this, if the guy that was late was named Doug Veerkamp, and we were talking about a road project in this city, the people behind me and to my right would be coming unglued if we all of a sudden said, oh, let's give Doug some extra time because, you know, maybe he got stuck in traffic one day. Attention to detail is important. You are building a partnership with an entity. This entity has demonstrated no capacity to hit their marks and say their lines. By the way, your response was brilliant. It was dispassionate, factual, it hit all the highlights, it was absolutely on, on task. These folks are going to be pissed off. The firemen are going to be upset. Everybody's going to be upset, but they should not be upset at you or you. They should be upset with the applicants because the applicants did not have enough wherewithal to get this thing when they were supposed to. This is simple. And if you do this, if you entertain this idea, then every time you have an RFP out there and somebody's seven minutes late, they're going to come with you with some sad story about how they didn't understand. And by the way, this RFP was not that complicated. I've seen much more complex things have to be put forward. It's not the Arts Council's fault that they are prepared. It's not their fault. Trying to blame them for being better at doing something is unfair. You have one decision. Stop this. Stop wasting your time, stop wasting staff's time, stop wasting this town's time, and move forward with this project. If you entertain this, you will have nothing but this for as long as there is a project. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Another member of the public wishing to address the council on 12.1. Good evening again, Mr. Smith.
Good evening. I think that what I'd point out for you is...
Could you pull the mic up? I want to make sure. Thank you. Please go start over.
Sure. If there was a book on big screw-ups, this one would be featured, I'm sure. Whatever any of you might think in terms of annoyance, it is absolutely nothing compared to me. But then, my experience is different than theirs, and it's different than the engineer. You know, for 40 years, I had deadlines. I can't tell you what it's like to walk up to a counter with a lawsuit that ultimately settled for six figures and be there as the door is going down. And if it wasn't for one minute difference, I would have been in big trouble. I also know that representing groups of people is one of the most difficult things you can do, just like herding cats. I was not party to any of the proposals, although my views about them are well-known. So, I feel helpless because after all, the applicants are representing the views of large numbers of people in the city, and there's lots of ways to measure it. So, when you talked about the proposals, they're commercial proposals, so it's like comparing apples and oranges. And the point taken a moment ago by Jennifer is well-taken. There are exceptions, and the city has been late in a number of things. Those things can be extended. There have been times when the Planning Commission extends deadlines for doing proposals. I think it's one just up on Bedford Avenue has been extended about three times. So, those things do happen, and the document you have describes discretion that you have. that you have. So, the rest of us would be out of the park. It's not quite so simple. Although, Mr. Clarici referred to specific people in not-so-complimentary ways, even though we were told that we weren't going to Democrat, Democrat either party, the fact is that they put together a project, and you're now want to make seven minutes the difference, that's going to deprive all of us of that. Now, I don't like anonymous complaints. I've received a few of them over the years in the city, and I got one a few years ago from the FPPC. So, I submitted mine to staff, that I submitted to the FPPC, because there's a rule related to conflicts of interest. And here, the decks are stacked, it would be perceived. They knew that, so they should have been extra careful, unless they didn't have the same experience I would have had. So, you had that kind of background where they were faced with that kind of situation, where there's that tremendous disparity. I think they've made it very difficult, because it's now more complex, whereas before it had been very simple, because under the conflict of interest rule that the state has in the code, it looks like you've been tough. Because I can tell you, actually looking at the briefs that you have from the court, that what you said, you, the City Council, about the way you were going to go about the Blue Room Committee, wasn't ever followed. If you read what was told to people, it appears, it only did any of it when you were actually having briefs that were due, otherwise sit for a year, and then, it says that you'd be making, that the committee would be making recommendations. Well, it didn't, because what we found out is that deals were made behind. There have been years of discussion with the staff, and you just heard from one of those who was part of the two-by-two committee. The other day, Don Ashton is saying that he told Cleve Morris that he could have a couple of the buildings. Now, I don't know if that's true, by the way. I just know I was there when he said it. It starts to sound like Monty Hall, "Let's make a deal." That's not the process that you go through in this. So, please don't suggest about this fairness, and you only got one rule, or one decision to make. You don't, because it's a staff outline. You've got another one, which is the use of discretion you have, no matter how unpleasant it might seem, because there's large numbers of people, like myself, who have interests represented by these applicants. And you're going to, you know, have fair consideration if you do that. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Kirk. Appreciate your comments. Another member of the public wishing to address the council on 12.1? Good evening.
Hello. It seems that I'm known in the audience. I'm not here to talk about the courthouse or about the Clay Street Bridge. I am here to talk about this proposal. I'm not even here, actually, to urge you to take a decision one way or the other with respect to the staff recommendation or the appeal. This is what it boils down to for me. We have a city asset that is in distressed condition that needs $3.5 million worth of work. Who do you trust to do that? You may decide you don't trust any of the proposals that you ultimately consider, but I would encourage you to consider whether you should trust somebody who can't even follow the simple rules that have been set out in the RFP. If they can't meet a deadline, how are they going to spend $3.5 million to repair a building effectively? And if they don't, every person in this city is going to be the loser. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tom. Any other member of the public wishing to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Kathy Lishman again. That building is very special, and it needs help, and it needs help from someone that can help it. And I appreciate the desire of the appeal group to do something, but maybe their application is premature. In the letter that they sent for the appeal, it said, "There are extremely limited resources and volunteer help, and extremely shortened development time." This is going to be a long process to fix this building, and it belongs to the community. And I don't believe in any way that any deals were made. I have confidence in the ethics of this council and this staff. That building had three tenants. It had two real estate tenants, and then it had the Arts Council, which now has a different name. And that's why the city was working with the Arts Council, like they worked with the two real estate people, that they were a tenant of that building. There have been a lot of accusations about conspiracies, and I just don't buy it. I never thought I'd say this, but maybe the city should, no, I won't say it. I won't say put it up for sale, because I absolutely don't believe that. But, and perhaps it indicates, by all the problems that have happened with this application along the way, perhaps it indicates that it's premature for them to be proposing this. And you have a responsibility to make sure that that building is saved in the best possible way.
Excuse me. Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council? If you could, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hello. My name is David Price, and I had no intention whatsoever to come up here and say anything tonight. But, and I haven't kept up since the meeting we had a couple months ago to make the decision to allow the people to add a new proposal. But, bottom line is, this is down to, the thumb drive was misplaced, the envelope wasn't sealed, and instead of being delivered at 3:00, and it was 3:08. And these people are our members of our community. They're all good people. They may not be as prepared as the Arts Council or have the ability to get grants, but they're working as hard as they can. And at least, we should give them the opportunity to continue this, to see who is the best possibility. I know people have opinions that, you know, make you believe that they can't do the job, but let's see. Let's give them the opportunity. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for your comments. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on this item, bring it back to council for discussion, questions to staff. Let me ask Mr. Driscoll and Mr. Morris first. They've heard the various comments. Have you, the concern Mr. Smith had regarding a conflict with the FPPC, we did receive a three-page email, or at least I did, from Mr. Smith about noon today. Mr. Driscoll, do you have any concerns with that item?
No, I don't. I read his email, although I read it fairly quickly and didn't have a lot of time, sorry.
Thank you, John.
But I think, Mr. Smith, in all due respect, is misapplying Government Code 1090, which was referenced very much in his email. Government Code 1090 basically says a, in this case, a council member cannot participate in a decision in which he or she has a financial interest. I don't think that applies to the matter that's before you tonight, or for the selection of who's going to do what to Old City Hall in the future. Unless you were to vote yourself in, and one of your members had somebody who would do it. But with a third entity, a separate entity, which none of you have any interest in, no financial interest, that is, I just don't think it applies.
Thank you.
I think that the references to the Public Contracts Code are also inapplicable. This is not a Public Contracts Code issue. It's not the typical bidding. It's not subject to the provisions of the Public Contracts Code. You don't even have to do an RFP if you didn't want to. You could go and lease this building to somebody of your own choice without doing an RFP. You have the right to dispose, lease, sell your own real property, the city's real property, without going through that type of a process.
All right. Thank you. Cleve, did you have any comments on any of the concerns we've heard from the public?
No.
All right. Councilmember's comments, questions? Let's start with questions first.
No questions.
Questions?
I have a question. In one of the letters, and I don't have it right in front of me, but it mentioned that the question period to community services was cut short by a couple of days, and I was wondering if that was the case, or...
Yes, I can answer that. In the letter, in the rejection, or the response protest letter, it mentions, it's under number three in their rejection letter, it said that, it said that the, let's see, city on July 19th extended the question period to the 25th with responses to be released on the 29th. That's correct. I sent an addendum out, because there was some confusing language, I thought, with the dates. And so, I thought putting the actual dates in was going to be superior and actually be a clarifying move. And the question period, moving it back to the 25th, actually gave both, an advantage to both proposers. That's what was in the addendum, and it was followed exactly. I was able to, at the, on the 25th, and the deadline for questions was on the 25th at 4:00 p.m. At 4:03 p.m., I sent out an email to both proposers with my answers to the questions. So, both proposers got all the questions and all the answers that were asked and answered on behalf of both. So, I felt that that was actually superior to what was in the RFP, and I was able to turn that around quicker. So, there wasn't any shortening of any time. The only time difference that might have been perceived to be shorter is just between the time that the question period was extended to and the end of the RFP. But I, like I said, I was able to release those answers on the 25th. So, actually, I think that I gave the folks a little bit more time to have clarity over the questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Is there any other questions? Patty, did you have any questions at this point? All right. Let me, oh, I had one. Just imagine that. When did we, when did we, the evening that we received the forty-some-page email, was that the first meeting in June, when we threw out the whole process and started over? What meeting was that?
I believe it was the last meeting in May.
The last meeting in May?
I would have to take a look at that. I'm not sure.
My point for asking is, because there were some obvious errors that the city had made, and they were on the first RFP, which took several months and had an ad hoc committee meeting, and this room was filled. There's probably 100 people here for that first hearing. We threw out both proposals and started all over. And that was in May? I was thinking it was June. May is even worse.
I believe, Mayor, it was May 28th, because I have Old City Hall presentation at 4:30, and then at 6 o'clock was the council meeting.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. So, May 28th, both organizations, both applicants, had prepared and submitted an RFP, including public presentations. We found errors that we made, threw the process out. We then, very clearly, and Sue Taylor at that meeting, made comments to improve the new RFP that we ultimately adopted. I think there were several suggestions that Michael Drobich made that evening. This would have been in June, when we adopted the new RFP process. There was several folks from both sides, well, mostly from the historic side, that made things that were adopted to the RFP proposal that then went into effect on July 1st. Is that correct? And we, staff was nice enough to hand this out. And one of the things that we made sure of is that it was clear as day, that the beginning date was July 1st, and the ending date was at 3:00 on July 31st. Now, if your organization had prepared and submitted and presented an RFP in May, why would you have a problem meeting the 10th of July, little on the 31st of July? So, I'm just saying, just as an example, the amount of time that was, the organizations were both prepared, yeah, the forms are different, you've got to fill them out, but your projects are the same, your partners are the same. So, please, we don't make comments while you folks talk. Please don't make any comments while, this is just an observation, and I wanted to get clarification as to when we did start all over again. So, there's been plenty of time for everybody to be prepared. Did you people all leave town? No questions. We are not going to be reopening the public comment on this. My fellow councilmembers have questions, comments? I'd like to have some discussion about where we're actually going with this, because there's more steps to this.
Yep. Just some comments. One, I just have to say, I'm disappointed that this wasn't good, this was not turned in in time. We went through a very long process to get to where we are today. From what the mayor just mentioned, in terms of, we threw out that first proposal, because we made errors on our side. And we did the responsible thing, and we went back out, and we did another RFP. And so, just to clarify a few things, John already mentioned some of this, but this is not a violation of the Public Contract Code. That's for contract, that's for construction. Those are for lowest possible bids. This is not applicable to this. This is for the best and highest use. This is why we did a RFP. This is not about what's going to be the lowest bid for this. It's not applicable. So, that has no, doesn't qualify for this one. Also, and I think this was mentioned in comments from the public, but to their own, in their own words, at least from the applicants that wrote, that signed this letter, is they have extremely limited resources and only volunteer help. We're entering into a lease, a long-term partnership, potentially. Why would we go forward if, in fact, they have extremely limited resources and only volunteer help? How would they be able to raise the necessary funds to be able to actually have this building be put into the right order? And then, I think it comes down really to, you know, the simplest answer is usually the correct one. And the correct one is that they missed the timeline by seven minutes. I know there was somebody that came up and said they worked in contracting for 18 years. Well, anyone that's worked in state contracting, city contracting, federal contracting, if you're late, you don't get a second chance. That is the most basic requirement, on time, in the manner that was asked for by the, whether it was the city, the state, or whoever. That is just a basic thing. There's not a do-over. I spent the night in hotels in San Francisco and Las Vegas, different places where I knew I had to submit an RFP. I do this for a living, to make sure that I was there on time and that I got it in properly. It takes an investment. You make a decision when you go forward with an RFP, to put resources, to put time, and to put money into it. That's why, in a lot of cases, you might only see maybe one, two, or three people that actually put forward a proposal, because it's costly, and you're taking a chance. And so, if you can't meet the most basic requirements, I don't know how you would go forward. And again, this comes down to one thing, not anything else that was in that letter, is whether they were on time, and they were not. And so, I would move to reject this.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
We're done commenting.
Well, we can, would you rather not have a motion on the floor?
There's one.
We'll just wait for a second then. All right. Councilmember Taylor, did you have any comments?
Yeah. It's been my desire for this project that we would have a competition of ideas and visions for these two civic treasures, because I think that's how we get what's best for the city. I can only imagine the amount of hard work that's gone into this application for both applicants. And I'm really empathetic of mistakes, but I do believe that when you make a mistake, you need to own it, which is why I voted to start the RFP process over last time, when I learned of the city's mistake. And in this case, the mistake is the applicant's. And I think they need to own it, and it pains me to see it come here. I would have really liked to have the two proposals brought up to the public, but in fairness to the process, and the other applicant in setting precedent for how we carry out RFPs, I don't know, I don't see any other option but to vote against it.
Thank you. Dennis, comments?
The first time around, we, I mentioned that this is more about kind of dating, building a relationship, trying to figure out whether we want to work together. a relationship, trying to figure out whether we want to work together with, with one applicant over the other. Because this is, this process is not about, this initial process is not about building the building. It's about whether we want to work with these people, work with one group over the other, because they both have visioning plans, they have ideas, and they're going to change as time goes on. This is not, this is not the end product, this is the beginning of the product. And so, I appreciate what Kara said about the hard stop. Last time, I was the final vote on, to bring this around again. And I, and I made that decision because I felt that the city made, made an error significant enough that disadvantaged one over the other and that I felt that it would come back and we would have to deal with that even further and we would inevitably have to be right here where we're at. And I got a lot of grief for that and some people liked it. But I made that decision because, because I felt like we needed to do that, do it right and do it over. We got here now, there was a hard stop. It was 3:00 and it was missed. And so there is a, there is a clear and decisive issue there that we have addressed. The next, the next piece then is an emotional response. Do you, you want to ask us, you're appealing to our, to our better graces, to, you know, work with you, you guys have a lot of challenges, and yet in your document, you, you basically tell us that we're gonna, we're committing fraud, we're, it's potential corruption, we're showing favoritism. I could go down a list of all the things, the bad things that you tell us that we're doing. And, you know, I, this is a direct violation of public contract. You go down all sorts of accusatory ways and not really trying to work with us to understand and appeal to the senses that might move me in a direction that would want to work with you. This has been my experience with some of the people in this group for a long time, not just this one event. And it's a historical process that I don't wish to, to go through again. And it's unfortunate, because I agree with Kara that I like the idea that we have a lot of people in the room that provide a lot of ideas and that through that process we can have the opportunity to have the best potential project. But in this case, the adversarial relationship that has been built, the attacks on the, on the other opponent throughout this process, the first process, not the other opponent, the other applicant, some of the things that I've heard that has gone on, phone calls and such, have brought me to the place where I don't feel confident that, that the relationship would be a good relationship to move forward with. And so, I'll leave it at that.
Hey, Dennis, Patty, did you have any comments?
Yes.
Or questions even?
No, I don't have any questions. But just observations. And I, I'm in agreement with all, especially the things that you said, Mark, about the length of time. And Dennis, when you just brought up about the vote, you know, and Mark and I did vote against it and we were not happy with you. But it was, it was, and in hindsight, I agree, it was, it was the right thing to do. And these folks have had nothing but, I mean, I think that they're, everything was already there before them and to not be able to meet that deadline, and not only the 3:00, but then to come in at 4:30 with a thumb drive and, I mean, and I, and I also agree with Dennis that I'm, I really, I know that public officials are targets and, but the accusations that have been made against us on this project, just, it just appalls me and, because I have absolutely nothing but love for that City Hall and I, I think everybody knows that I was probably the one lone wolf that did not want to sell it. And this has been going on my whole 12 years on the council. I just kept saying, we can keep it, we can keep it. Anyway, we worked out a plan, we rented it, and to damn the other applicant because they did due diligence, it, that's just not, it's just not fair to them. And I think it's terribly unkind and, and I think it would be not fair to them also to, they have met all the-
Please.
Shut up.
They've met-
Could he, pardon me.
They keep doing the questions and we're not about to-
Please, Fran, please sit down or leave, please leave the chamber if you cannot.
Yes. And now the emails go without. Thank you.
It's unfortunate.
Let's wait for Fran to leave the room.
Really?
We look forward to your emails.
Well, I think those emails are unfortunate.
Could you please leave the room?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, I don't understand why you're-
Please leave the room. Thank you very much. We don't need any disruption. Thank you. Thank you, Commander Ren. Patty Borelli, please go ahead and-
I don't think it's fair to the other applicant that they did due diligence and they did everything that we required and then to, to keep this thing going for that reason. I just think that we ought to stick to her.
Thank you. And let me just say, in my 12 or 13 years on the council, in my years on the planning commission, that's the first time I've ever seen a police officer have to ask somebody to leave this chamber.
It's the second time I've seen it.
So that's very sad. And that reflects on that individual and that row there that has been smirking continuously since we closed public comment. This is a serious business. This is public property and we have an obligation to use it wisely. Whether, no other comments? Let me just make a couple of comments. And I appreciate staff clarifying that it was in May when we stopped. We started all over again. And yeah, I was opposed to that action. I was very proud, however, of the RFP proposal that we did come up with. It was very clear. It was out there and available. Why an organization that had interest in the building would intentionally delay any effort when they knew what the deadlines were is beyond me. A comment that I wrote here, it was, "I can't believe that the tribes and the historic society allowed this to happen. We gave everybody a clear second chance. Why didn't you come in a half an hour early, seven days early?" Oh, you know, there's just a whole lot of that and it goes to not being able to perform, not performing in a professional manner. This is an expensive building. It has a lot of serious issues. It is going to be a real undertaking. You know, the Taylors have spent over five years working on their building. They're still working on their building. They have, they have one of four suites currently occupied, that we know of. So there's an example of just the kind of labor, labor of love that these kind of buildings take. It's, so when we, we go ahead and work to try and make this a very clear process, I can't tell you how, when I got the word that they had not met the deadline, it's just unbelievable that you wouldn't be a day early. You'd say, man, thanks for doing this. You know what's really ironic is they had time to arrange for a volunteer fireman from Folsom and a wagon and a band and all kinds of things back in May, but we missed it by seven minutes, a thumb drive. And don't even go to the envelope. I'm sorry, staff had to include that because it was part of the RFP. You're supposed to provide an envelope. So, there is a sad effort by, by a number of folks to portray the city as a destroyer of history and I'm sure they'll have a field day on social media in just a few minutes. And that's very unfortunate, because we are not a destroyer of history. You have no idea what we may require the other person, the other organization, to do to that building. You may not, may not realize the level of historical preservation that has yet to be decided, because there's still a hell of a lot of work to do with the remaining applicant on this building. And there's still a lot of things that have to be dealt with. So, you know, it's a small group of folks that seem to almost make a living by portraying us as destroying the town. And the history of our town is that it has grown from the day since it was born. It has changed. Every day a new rancher or miner came to town, that changed the town. Every new store that opened, that was a change. Where would, where do we stop? Do we take electricity out? Do we do away with running water to make it more historically correct? Where do we draw these lines? Is it just whimsical for what suits my personal needs? No. It's a matter of a community. It's a living main street and it always will be. So if, with my comments, is there, would somebody like to second the motion? If not, I will. I'll second the motion. So we have a motion to deny, to uphold, to reject the-
Reject the protest.
To reject the protest. Is that correct, Mr. Saragosa?
That is correct.
And I will second the motion. I'll ask the clerk to call, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. I will go ahead and take a five-minute recess and I would ask if we could try and stick right to that so that we can continue on with the rest of our items. We'll be back in five minutes. All right, I will call the meeting back to order at 10 minutes after 8:00. Thank you all very much. Appreciate the opportunity to take a break, go back and do a little bit of clarification. Mr. Driscoll, would you please address the concern?
Yes. I want to request that you reopen 12.1 to hear the motion again and the second and the vote. The concern I have is that because there was the motion and then intervening comments without the second, there's potentially a flaw that that motion died for lack of a second.
Okay.
So when you voted, you didn't vote on a motion. So if we could do a redo.
Certainly. I'll go ahead and open the, item 12.1, the motion, and ask for a motion on the item.
I'll make a motion to reject the-
Protest.
The protest. My question though is, if we're reopening it, do we reopen?
No. You just, you don't have to reopen the entire-
The regulation.
Okay. Okay. So then I would, that's my motion.
So you would move, you would move staff's recommendation?
For clarification, if we were bringing up something new, then we would.
Okay. Thank you.
And so we will not be receiving any new information on the item. And I will go ahead and second the vice mayor's motion, and that is to follow staff's recommendation. And I will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Now, the motion carries unanimously, the same result as we had earlier. The clarification is what the intent of the motion was due to the length of the discussion. Thank you for that, Mr. Driscoll. Moves us on to item 12.2, authorize staff-
Mayor, can I, can I just, just, sorry, just for second clarification on there. In the, in the recommendation, staff recommendation, it says approve the schedule contained in the RFP to hear the presentation. Does that mean you want to hear those as scheduled on the 19th or would you like to schedule that presentation in conjunction with your meeting on the 27th? Yeah, 27th.
27th.
You have that option. It'll just be the one presentation. You can set a time limit, however you would like to do that, but I just want to see what you would like to do there.
Thank you.
So we know what to do.
Appreciate that. I prefer the 27th as a regular council meeting.
I'm fine with either.
That works for everyone. Do you need a motion or just direction of staff?
And a half an hour. Since-
So 30 minutes?
We can change the date. Yeah. Yeah. Since, since you did already approve it in the other, yes, if you would do a motion to approve it on the 27th, that would- I move that we, that we move the presentations to our normally scheduled meeting on the 27th of August and have them before one half hour.
Second.
Then moved to second and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So the, the RFP proposal will be heard at our meeting on August 27th?
It's not a special council meeting, it's just a regular-
And the presentation will be approximately 30 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Cleve, appreciate that. All right, well, now we'll move on to 12.2, authorize staff to negotiate and enter an agreement with the Lighted Candle for the homeless services. Cleve, do you have that report?
Actually, I'm going to ask Mr. Zeller to handle that one.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again, Council, City Manager Morris and Attorney Driscoll. Item 12.2 is a request to authorize staff to negotiate and enter into an agreement with the Lighted Candle for homeless services and storage space for supplies. This, in essence, is about setting up a win-win situation that helps the Lighted Candle assist the homeless population here in Placerville and also help the city by cleaning up campsites. Some background was provided in the staff report on other efforts that we'd had. We know that homelessness is an issue here in Placerville and there's been several attempts, in cooperative attempts, that have been made to ease the problem and they've had differing levels of success. And recently, the staff has been working with Eldorado County, including Continuum of Care, to identify solutions to the homeless problem. And an effort that's been implemented is a joint project with the county sheriff known as the homeless outreach team. It's the HOT team. And they have a statement outlining their purpose. They are, they interact with the county's homeless population on an individual level while overcoming the law enforcement barrier between homeless and law enforcement efforts. And they've been very successful focusing on the homeless issue with this mission in place. And there are, there's additional information, if you or the public is interested, regarding the homeless outreach team on the agenda. So the, on the discussion point, we have a group, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit named the Lighted Candle, and they've assisted the HOT team by providing services during these events that the county has been holding. And these services have assisted in bridging the gap between the homeless and the needed services provided by the HOT team. The Lighted Candle is in need of space to store some supplies for their operation. Their primary project at this time is providing portable laundry services to the homeless and a storage location would provide, would store supplies to support this effort. So we've identified a location off Lower Main Street to place this container. It's actually in a, in a storage container. The agreement would include the following provisions. That would be a month-to-month lease with a 60-day cancellation notice. The LSE, the Lighted Candle, would be responsible for the placement, the maintenance, and the security of the facility. The LSE be responsible for any permits that might be required to keep it there. City would have the right to cancel the contract with or without cause. No operations would be allowed to operate on the site. It would only be for storage, not for any of the Lighted Candle's programs. And no persons would be allowed to camp otherwise or lawyer on the site. And exchange for this, the Lighted Candle has agreed to work with the city to provide volunteers to assist with cleanup of the abandoned homeless camps. And I believe that they've already made some strides from some emails we've received from them already. It's worth noting that last year, around $60,000 was spent cleaning up camps. So if we can put together a successful volunteer program, the city should see significant savings. So there are a couple of options here. The first would be to authorize this staff to negotiate and execute the agreement as it's outlined in the contract, or in the staff report. You could authorize staff to negotiate and execute and, an agreement with modifications or don't approve the agreement. And there will be a minimal cost on the part of the city to implement the contract and no budget impact. So what staff is looking for is authorization to negotiate and enter into an agreement with the Lighted Candle for homeless services and storage space for supplies. And I understand there are, there is a representative from the Lighted Candle that is here to have some input and to take questions.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate that report. Is there any questions from the council at this point? All right, I'll go ahead and ask the representative from the Lighted Candle, if you please come to the podium and introduce yourself and let it, tell us a little bit about the project.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name's Peter Brown. I'm CEO of the Lighted Candle. We're a 501(c)(3), as Mr. Zeller indicated. Our primary focus, what is the Lighted Candle? Our primary focus is to provide relief to homeless and the underserved in Eldorado County. And we've been doing that basically in the Placerville area for starters, rather than countywide, just to kind of get our bases, our basis established. We've been doing free mobile laundry service for almost a year now on a regular basis. We have been doing it at the Upper Room Dining Hall on, once, on a weekly basis and some rather spectacular results from this program. We've been able to bridge a number of gaps in relationships with homeless folks, reach some levels of understanding and try to find- some levels of understanding, and try to find some constructive solutions towards minimizing the negative impacts that they may have on the surrounding community, and also furthering their positive steps out of their homelessness eventually. And so to that end, we're also working on additional projects which will shortly include free mobile shower project, both a portable structure that we can set up next to our laundry, and also a mobile one that we'll be deploying with an RV that's retrofitted for that purpose. We have other larger projects in mind down the road. But one of the, one of the projects that relates to Mr. Zeller's agenda item specifically is about trash cleanup. We have engaged the local homeless community with the idea that their trash doesn't necessarily need to be scattered around but for the fact they don't have the resources to buy plastic bags, and they don't have the resources for anybody to collect those bags and take them to the dump. And so we have stepped in in that fashion and created a trash, a pilot program with trash cleanup with the local homeless in a limited area. We've collaborated with Eldorado Disposal, who provides us free access to dump that trash. And so we are now collecting trash from homeless folks in a few selected sites, and those areas are actually becoming quite clean, quite attractive-looking, quite an improvement. And part of the process is not just, you know, I'm consistently asked, are we enabling? And, and I will tell you, absolutely not. One of the things that we're very focused on is engaging our homeless clients to payback, to be invested in, to assist with the furthering of their own improvement and the community in which they live. And so part of that is, we also have them, we engage them in volunteer work in cleaning up trash in other areas as well. And so this, the site in particular that Mr. Zeller and Mr. Morris are, have been speaking with me about is a tremendous, tremendously trashed area. It's an abandoned, for the most part, homeless camp that is probably the largest we've looked at for quite some time, and it's a massive project. But we have already begun, just because it's what we do, and as a sign of good faith to the, to the city council, we've already begun cleaning parts of that up, bagging the trash in preparation for a larger event that we hope to do in collaboration with the city to make a massive difference, if not totally clean up that site. And when we have that event, when we have that major event to actually do field a team of a couple of dozen volunteers, there will be homeless people in those teams assisting for a variety of reasons, but obviously to demonstrate something to the community, to demonstrate something to themselves, and to assist us in bridging some gaps, lowering stigma, and helping to move them towards a better future and improve the environment of the city at the same time. So there's a win-win-win-win going on here.
Thank you. Is there any questions from Peter on the option, on the, on the item? Thank you very much.
I always wait till you end there. Are you able to provide Sharps containers to them as well? Do you have access?
Yes, sir. We'll be working with Placerville Police and Eldorado Sheriff's as far as having Sharps containers. We've done this on previous events, and we work in collaboration with them for that. We also have fairly strong waiver forms that we have all volunteers sign in advance. And we have also first aid kits and various other precautions taken, and specific instructions for people not to touch anything that they have any doubts about. We have remote trash pickers, and it's pretty well organized when we, when we do such an event. But in this case, I expect we'll probably be collaborating with some city resources as well as Eldorado Disposal, Placerville PD, and Sheriff's Office, and/or Sheriff's Office.
Okay, thank you.
I actually have a question. Do you have any statistics or information about how many people you've been able to help move beyond homelessness?
We aren't that far along yet, so honestly, we're, you know, there's so many people that have this notion that if you have a homeless shelter here, you can take somebody from here and stick them in there. It doesn't work that way. And we're finding out very quickly that there are a number of steps that you need to accomplish before you can get to that goal, which is our, our long-term goal. So no, we haven't, we haven't officially taken anybody on homelessness yet, but we are, we are building bridges and we are making, I think, very good progress in that regard.
Thank you.
I have a question. Tell me about the proposed storage unit. I have absolutely no idea location-wise. I wish we had pictures or something to kind of give us an indication of, you know...
I can give you a beautiful mental picture. It's, you've seen the shipping containers on the back of a big rig that come intermodal from the, they ship overseas, the shipping containers?
Yes.
Okay. Or your typical rental locations where you have your storage? Okay, that's what it is. It's a 45-foot high cube storage container, so it's a big metal box.
Where are you going to put it? I mean, does...
The location, well, the location, Cleve has found a couple of places?
Yeah, the location that we're recommending is the city property that's down below Kentucky Fried Chicken, I'd say. We had looked at it, a potential dog park at one time.
So down below?
Down below, yes. Down below the freeway.
And the freeway and, okay.
Down below, on Lower Main Street, yes.
As far as a visual concern, it's invisible from the roadway?
Yeah, man, I guess I do have a visual concern, also a concern whether it would be vandalized or, you know, anything like that. I mean, is it going to be in a...
I hope not.
I know. Protected so that, you know...
We would have it very well, I mean, if you come, you're not going to break into those containers unless you're awfully determined and well-equipped.
Okay.
If we lock it and padlock it. If, I hope there's no vandalism problem down there. I'm told that there hasn't been. It's mostly storage of Department of Transportation resources and barriers and gravel piles and things, so, but we obviously also would be concerned about the security of, of the items that we have in storage there. And we're hopeful that you will allow us to secure it adequately, maybe even putting a chain-link fence around the container. That would be something we could negotiate perhaps.
So is there other traffic that goes down there to...
Our Public Works Department, I'm looking at next, sometimes has some storage of some materials from time to time down there, but not a lot.
That's correct, Cleve. There's some stockpiles of material like gravel and asphalt grains, and there's a little bit of pipe down there. But there's a, there's a perfectly level old concrete pad where they can put the shipping container. It'll work out pretty good.
Oh, good.
There's also a pretty heavy-duty chain imposed across the top to prevent anybody from driving down there right now.
I'd also like to stress to the council members that this storage facility would not be publicized or visited by anybody other than board members or selected committee members from our organization. This is not something where we would want to be doing any business and where we would want any of our clients to actually know where it, where it is. This would simply be storing donated clothing, soap, laundry supplies, towels, and so, so on and so forth. That's basically all it will be. So it would be visited by myself or other members of our board to pick up supplies to take to some event somewhere.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Dennis, did you have a question?
One more question. Is this a, is this a long-term commitment? I realize that we have a 60-day out, but is your intent to be there, you know, as long as you can?
Well, I hope so.
Okay. I didn't know if this was an interim step to when you have another site in mind.
Hopefully not.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, we're, we're looking for a positive dating relationship with the city. And hopefully, and hopefully we prove ourselves to you to where you see that it's a, that it's a win for you folks. And, and when, in return, just the ability to have a place to store our stuff would be just a fabulous thing. And so, yeah, I'm hoping that, that maybe through a probationary period and you see that we're good tenants, that we can work something out where we can have some security that we don't have to hire a tilt truck or a crane or something to get that container and move it somewhere else real quickly. We'd like to have some stability for our programs.
One question, and actually it's for staff. Is there any liability on our end when we're talking about volunteers? And what prompted me to think about that was just the idea of Sharps when you asked that question. So when we have volunteers coming and going, is, are there any liability on the city side if they get stuck or they fall down and hurt themselves while they're...
Yeah, we actually would have, when volunteers that we sign, when we sign up volunteers to work for, you know, do things for the city, that we run the risk of workers' compensation, liability issues, et cetera. We will have the, a release form that Mr. Brown referred to, and we will make sure that that is sufficient for our needs also. There are some pretty strict rules that they give them that he mentioned in terms of the volunteers, you know, don't pick up Sharps. That's my understanding, that they refer those to the public safety officials that are there that can help with things like that. So there are some procedures that we go through. Is a risk, absolutely there is, I wouldn't deny that, but we, we think it's, the county has done it in a couple of sites, I believe, outside our city limits, and we've talked to them about it, and we feel that it is something that is an acceptable risk that we should pursue at this time.
Mr. Vice Mayor? Thank you. In that, in that regard, I'd just like to say also that the Lighted Candle does have event insurance. We have a million-dollar liability policy, and this type of event, I'm told by our agent, is, is a covered type of event. But even so, we still, for our prior events, have had very stiff, very strict waiver forms that are very clear that if you're coming to participate in this, you're, you're on your own and you understand the nature of it. And, and these are forms we adapted and adopted from research online with, City of Hasperia, for example, was doing similar kinds of homeless camp cleanups, and this was a form that they had used, so.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
I think we have one more question?
I just have one. How long have you, your organization, how long has your organization been active here in town?
We've been in, we've been in nonprofit business for two and a half years.
Okay.
We've been actively doing the mobile laundry service for about a year. Prior to that, it was more of an individual getting to know folks at the Upper Room and elsewhere and finding out the needs. But the, the mobile laundry was really our first mobilization of an actual organized project with some, some focus towards it.
Well, from everything I've heard, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I think it's a great start. We certainly needed to start somewhere and have positive results, so.
We're looking to think outside the box a little bit.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and, if you wouldn't mind taking a seat, I'm going to have an open public comment on this item. Invite any member of the audience who wishes to comment on item 12.2. Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Ruth Michelson, and I just stayed over because I just wanted to give a personal testimony, because I volunteered with the Lighted Candle. I've been to their laundry events, and it's just so wonderful because it's such a way to connect with the homeless on a one-to-one basis, and it's such an esteem builder, I think, for the homeless to be recognized. Pete is such a really generous and hard-working man, really an outstanding person, and he has other people on the board that are likewise so incredibly dedicated. And I think he gives the homeless a certain level of pride in themselves, just that someone has, you know, as we do laundry, there's a pop-up that goes up, someone brings snacks. It's an all-day kind of a thing. It's from nine in the morning till three in the afternoon, and this trailer has two washers and two dryers in it, and those of us volunteers are loading the wash and putting things in the dryer, and then we're handing back to the homeless clean clothes. And he also has a bunch of people who are making laundry baskets, laundry bags. So they have their clean clothes and a fresh laundry bag. And it's just, and then with this shower idea coming up, too. I mean, I think people have to feel good about themselves before they can really re-enter society, and I think that Pete's group is just doing a great, great job, and I can't say enough good things about him. So that's why I stayed to give that testimonial.
Thank you, Ruth. We appreciate you staying over and providing us that information. Is there another member of the audience who wishes to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for action. I assume there's no other reviews needed to put a container on this old site?
There is. I was talking to Mr. Rivas, and there will be a permit required that we will work with them on, so.
Very good. We want to make sure that we do that. Are there any questions and comments, or would you like to make a motion?
I'd move that we authorize staff to negotiate an agreement with the Lighted Candle.
Can I second that?
Moved in second, and all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, we look forward to much continued success. Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience this evening.
Wow.
Apparently, there's a big windstorm over there.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to 12.3. People may have to come up. Joe, you can, they can use your microphone. Adopt a resolution endorsing the Eldorado County Fire District proposed property tax measure. Mr. Morris? Are you going to defer this to Mr. Warren, who's absent?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall at your previous meeting, you heard a presentation by Chief Ogan on their proposed tax measure that is currently out. The ballots have gone out and are due the 27th, correct, of this month? And you requested that staff bring back a potential letter or resolution. I did a resolution endorsing the measure that is out, and so that is the item that's before you tonight, is a resolution to endorse Measure B, put out by the Eldorado County Fire Protection District. So, any questions? I'll answer those.
Great, thank you. Cleve, any questions for Mr. Morris? All right, none hearing any. I'll ask Chief Ogan if he'd like to approach the podium and see if we can get it to work. Nope, we're back at the ocean. Thank you, Commander Ren.
If I can do this. So like I said the last couple of times that I've been here, Mayor and City Council, we value greatly our relationship with the city of Placerville, and we take it seriously as we, as has been obvious tonight with our work with you guys on the ordinances for the, the burn bans and mitigation, the fuel mitigation projects, so we take that very seriously. And so last, last month, or as we presented that proposal to you, we appreciate the opportunity to come and, come and present that to you. We appreciate the opportunity that you have been willing to support this for us, and it's going to mean a lot to our district if we can get this to pass. We've got a critical staffing issue that we've got to deal with, and hopefully this will be the tool that gets us through. So with that, thank you very much for the opportunity. I hope you will excuse me tonight if I leave right after this. I'm working on about 38 hours of no sleep.
You're going right ahead and leaves, or...
So we've had a very busy 48 hours.
You're doing good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for answering our questions on the other item. All right, is there another member of the public that would, wishes to address the council on this particular item? Let's see. Nope.
Mickey Kaiserman. I'm a director of the Eldorado County Fire Protection District. I really appreciate that the city has agreed to endorse this tax measure. It's a really important issue for safety, not only of the firemen, but also efficiency in putting out fires. I think people don't understand, you know, the economy is booming, and people are saying, why do we need this tax measure? Just to be clear again, in between 2008 and now, this fire district works off of property taxes. So what happened with the economic downturn, the Great Recession, a lot of homes were sold at lower values, there were short sales, and those property taxes got lowered. So there's only a 2% increase in those values as they improved, even though they may be worth more money, a lot of those... as they improve, even though they may be worth more money, a lot of those homes. So, they've been dealing with over a $3.5 million shortfall between the 2008 and today, based on the 2008 level. And they've been providing services. So, it's really important that this tax, it's a special tax, requires a two-thirds vote. And I'm hoping that we get it passed. It's really important for the whole fire district. And there's been some confusion out there. There definitely is an oversight committee in this measure. And it's a fact. It's listed in the measure. Chief Ogan has talked about it. He's even talked to the tax people that said it's not in there. It is in there. And I'll be helping them set up that, that oversight committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Could you be kind enough to see if our podium microphone is working? I think we got it fixed.
Hello?
Thank you, sir.
Very good.
Good.
One of other, Joe's many talents is also an audio specialist. He can be hired for parties and large events, but he comes at a very high price. Good evening, Sue. Let's see if they're, there we go.
I really appreciated, when we were working to pass Measure L, it was the fire department people who came and helped us, and did door hangers for us, and talked to people, and encouraged it, and put off their own measure until now, to make sure that we could get Measure L passed, so that we could work on the city's water sewer and streets. I looked at it and said, $96, whoa, $96 a year on my property tax. My house is worth more than that. I'm perfectly willing to make a few little adjustments in my world, so that I can pay that fire tax, because I think it's worth it. Having only two people on an engine is crazy. The Forest Service would never send out an engine with only two people, never. It's usually five. And so, to at least have three people on an engine, oh, absolutely, you've gotta do that. That's minimum. And the fact that we have engines with only two people is ridiculous. We really need to pass this and, and provide so that they have the ability to actually fight the fire, because one person has to stay with the engine. So, if you've only got one other person on the engine, there's only one person out there with a hose. You need at least two, so you can go two directions and flank it. One person with a hose is really not very effective unless it's a pretty small fire. If it's only a burn pile, you're fine. But if you actually have a fire, you need more people than that. So, I definitely, I've already sent my ballot in, mark yes.
Thank you for your comments, Sue. Is there a number, excuse me, another member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll close it and bring it back to the council for action. Somebody like to make a motion?
Quick comment. I know, I don't know, actually, where we're going with this. But Major, Major L was not a quid pro quo to just go ahead and approve this. They had to actually show up with the, with the measure that made sense, and they did. One of the biggest issues with this is that we are not hi, the hiring of firefighters is challenging. Getting them, having enough money to hire enough to fill all of our stations is challenging. And the reality is that the economic factors are such that it's gonna be difficult to continue hiring firefighters in this community if we don't pay them well. And we will not have the, and the alternative is, is to save money and lay off firefighters and close fire stations. And, you know, this is a, I don't believe this is a scare tactic. I believe it's a reality. In order to keep firefighters in our stations and on the engines showing up, and it only tends to matter when, when it, when your house is burning down.
When you need them.
And I'd urge, you know, not just the City Council, but the city residents to realize that we need, we need good firefighters, and we need all the firefighters to fill these positions, and not just hope that there are gonna be enough of them to be around when our house is needed, or our family is needed for medical care. I'll go ahead and leave it at that. Thank you.
I have a question for Dennis then. It seems, or this, is it Captain?
Chief.
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 Chief Ogan.
I'm demoting you, I'm sorry.
Oh, my goodness. And he's, and he's on his 39th hour on duty.
And he's 30, okay. This is gonna take a little bit of thinking, so I'm sorry.
He's probably been on a-
That's all right. I'd like to ride a fire engine again.
Okay. I'm, I'm, so much has been said about hiring firefighters, and meeting the, the challenge of other districts taking away because of the, so I'm wondering, and I haven't seen any really percentages, of how much of this you think is going to go new hires or salaries. And I, I think it's, I think it's an, I think it's a legitimate question that we're not doing this all just to pay salaries, and the pension plans that are out there, et cetera.
Yeah, so let me break it down. There's really four areas that the, that the measure's going to go to. The major area is hiring 12 new firefighters to bring our staffing up to three-person staffing on all of our engines. So, the measure is proposed to bring in about $2.6 million. About 1.6 million of that is gonna go to hiring the 12 firefighters. About 400,000 in rough numbers is going to go to offsetting the amortization for their pensions. So, we're not just bringing on these new firefighters and pushing the unfunded liability down the road somewhere. We're actually taking care of it as we hire the new people. So, we're not, we're not having to deal with that going down the road. We have an infrastructure problem in the organization where we need to start allocating money to, to capital improvement projects. We've got three fire stations that are in desperate need of either replacement or remodeling. So, about 300,000 is gonna go to, toward capital improvement projects. And then, the remaining, about 300,000, is going to go to retention strategies, which is, part of that will be increasing some salaries on a very small, modest level, probably in the 3% to 4% range for our firefighters.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
I have a comment.
Comment.
Voters get asked to pay, like, à la carte for services all the time on bills every year, and I know that they get really tired of it, and rightfully so. But this is really important. My, just a personal kind of anecdote, but my husband used to fight fires in Montana and California before we moved out here. And a firefighter came to our door with the information about this bill, and talked to my husband, who definitely does not want to pay anymore for services, more than what we already pay. And he was just shocked that there's only, there's fire engines out there with only two people on it. So, he was like, yeah, this, this bill needs to be voted for, coming from someone that fought fires. So, I encourage everyone to, to vote for this bill, and I'm happy to support this letter of recommendation.
All right, thank you. Did I ask for a motion? I know I closed the public comment. Does somebody like to move the item?
I'd move. I'll move that we, that we allow the mayor to issue a letter of support of this.
Well, actually, it's a, it's a resolution.
Resolution.
Adopt a resolution.
Adopt a resolution to support this.
It's a much stronger document.
I'll second that.
Another quick comment, I, before we go, is, I thought it was sort of apropos, you know, today, we talked about the fire ordinance, and, you know, in my mail, I got my notice of non-renewal. Oh. On my fire insurance, and so.
Oh, Michael.
So, you know, I'll, I'll be, I'll be dealing with that. But I, I think it's indicative of what we need to do as a community, as a city, as a county, to, to deal with our fire. Having three firefighters on the trucks are gonna certainly be helpful. Our ordinance is gonna be helpful. We'll have, and there's probably a bigger discussion about insurance in this area as well. But I definitely support this. I think it's good for our residents. It's a small price to pay, so that our communities don't burn down. So, I will be supporting this as well. Thank you. And you couldn't live on a more urbanized street in the city without- Yeah, I mean, I, I have two fire hydrants within 500 feet of my house, a firehouse less than a mile away, but. On a state highway? On a state highway, so. None, no, non-renewal? Yep.
Wow.
That's spooky. All right, is there, I think I've closed public comment. Wendy, did I close public comment?
Thank you, did, yes.
I think I did, all right. And we've had a motion, and we have a second? We have a second. We had a second from Councilmember Taylor. All right, and since this is a resolution, I'm gonna ask for a poll, a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragusa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries. As the fire chief literally responds Code 3 down Main Street. Can't make this stuff up. I saw the red lights. He ran out. They've had a lot of wildland fires here lately. It's getting spooky time. Authorize the mayor, item 12.4, to sign a letter in supporting for SB 5. A brief introduction to the item, Mr. Morris?
Yeah, just quickly. This item, this item is one that the League of California Cities has requested us to support. I've done just a brief review of it. Basically, what this does is gives us more tools to, to work on affordable housing, infrastructure, and economic development in the city. And so, we're just, it does have, allow some things, potentially in the future, some tax increment projects, similar to what redevelopment did in the past. And so, it appears to be something that we can support, and perhaps bring some new tools to us that we could use to, to benefit the city. So, with that, this is simply a letter of support they're requesting from the mayor that we prepared, so.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add a couple of comments on that. There's also about $200 million that would be allocated on a continuous funding basis towards some of these potential projects as well. So, as we look at, whether it's Placerville Drive or Upper Broadway, and we look at, you know, whether it's mixed use or other things, we've had the, the project with Secog, you know, there may be possibilities to bring some of this funding to bear in those corridors as well. And so, it's a, it's a huge priority for the League of Cities this year. It's, it has broad support in the legislature, as well as from labor, other groups. So, it's a, I think it's a great bill for us, for potentiality of it. I would support it wholeheartedly. Well, thank you.
Sure, I have a question.
Is there any questions? Yes. Questions from Mr. Morris?
Well, or Mike.
Or Mr. Mike.
Again, we get down to this rural versus urban, so are we gonna get the shaft on this, or is it, are we getting some kind of a guarantee?
Yeah, there's a formulaic in there, so that we would be able to compete for the money and, and not just be shut out by, like, Los Angeles and San Francisco.
Right.
So, we'd still have an opportunity to, to compete for funds. Yes. All right. Any other questions? I'll go ahead and open public comment on this item. Any member of the public wishing to address the council on 12.4? Seeing no one approaching the podium, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for action. Somebody like to make a motion? I'll move. That would be support. And it's seconded by Councilmember Taylor. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Cleve. Moving on to item 12.5, adopt a, adopt a resolution approving a grant application with the California Department of Water Resources. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, good evening, Council.
Good evening again, Jerry.
This piece of business is to adopt a resolution that's approving a grant application to the California Department of Water Resources, specifically for their program for urban stream restoration. The, the, the grant application is actually part of Prop 68, which was approved back in 2018. And that measure authorized $4 billion in general obligation funds for state and local parks, environmental protection, water, infrastructure, and flood protection. So, the urban streams restoration program is currently funded by Prop 84 and this Prop 68. And what we're looking at specifically for Placerville is that we are looking to get a grant to fund a project to, to restore our streams, specifically Hangtown Creek. So, there's a total of $9.42 million available. And the applications are due at the end of this month, and Eldorado County Water Agency is assisting the city with grant application. So, just a little background, too, for several years, the city's discussed moving the farmer's market from the Ivy House parking lot back by the trail in order to free up some parking and provide a better atmosphere. And in conjunction with the Clay Street Bridge repair project, the city's looked for ways to improve the adjacent trail. And it looks like this is a really good opportunity for us. City was approached by Eldorado County Water Agency regarding potential projects, and it was determined that stream restoration adjacent to the farmer's market, so it's just, that would be east of the Clay Street Bridge, would be a good project. And Clay, Eldorado Water Agency is taking the lead on preparing the grant. They do have an engineering firm that's helping them. And right now, my Community Services Department is providing some background information. So, the project is really focusing on several elements. It's a, a seat wall adjacent to the creek, a rail fence for safety, similar to the, the split rail that we have on other parts of the Eldorado Trail, pedestrian bridge, which will be a big chunk of the, of the dollars, which would be adjacent to the building on the Ivy House lot, and an information kiosk to educate the public that would be the, the interpretive and the educational portion. And so, the, there's a resolution attached. And so, what we're looking for is adoption of the resolution as proposed. The council can also adopt the resolution, make changes to the scope of the project, or not adopt. So, we're still working on the final budget for the project. I just got costs back for the, for the footbridge and working with the consultant. But the good news is, this would be free money, because we're eligible for 100% grant with no match. And it just would be staff time and effort to go a long way towards improving part of the, of the creek and part of the city. And that's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Jerry. Appreciate that. Are there any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions, but I've got a comment.
Okay, well, hang on just a minute. I'll go ahead and open public comment on this item. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the council on item 12.5, the Creek Bed Restoration Project, Clay Street to Locust Street?
Sue Rodman, and one of my, the thing that I have thought that Placerville really needed to do for years and years and years is to make Hangtown Creek something that is a focal point for the city, something that is something of beauty for the city, instead of just something that runs a sewer line down the middle of it. So, I want to know, are you looking at doing restoration of the creek, as well as building a wall and a fence and a bridge?
Yes.
We will get, we will get that answered for you, Sue.
Okay, 'cause if it includes, I mean, I think that a bridge like, or a bridge to, for a pedestrian bridge to provide better access to the trail is a wonderful idea. I like the seat wall. I like the, I've seen the other places where they have a split rail type fence along the trail, and it really looks nice. And so, I would love to see this one go. So, good job.
Thank you, Sue. We'll get your question answered about stream bed restoration. Is there another member of the public wishing to address the council on 12.5? Good evening, Jennifer.
Yeah, hi, Jennifer Chapman, Placerville resident. So, I guess my questions were along those lines as well, in terms of what is the real restoration to the creek and water quality issues. And it seems like it, you know, it's a recreation project. It seems like when, you know, there was a lot of vegetation removed in doing the first phase of, you know, this development along the creek. I mean, it just, it just doesn't seem like it's about restoring the creek. And it does seem like we have some major things, I think, with these pipes and sewers. And it sounds like there's a lot of money. And I'm wondering if there's anything about those pipes and sewers and these other things that may be contributing to water, you know, real water quality issues and creek concerns that would be bigger ticket items. I mean, I think this, you know, I understand this is all, you know, nice park ideas, but it, I, I don't, you know, aside from the bigger picture of everything else, you know, with, there's a lot of things you could do with that corridor that would be about natural history, and it's more events-oriented, and it's congested in there. And you're actually bringing a lot of activity that may be a, you know, kind of a trade-off in terms of what ends up in the creek. But I still go back to, and asking the engineer, really, I mean, there must be some real things that you could apply for, from a program that has so much money, it sounds like, and especially with the, the big match. So- So, I mean, I think it's great to get free money, but I just wonder what else we might need for really doing some things with that water, waterway. Thank you.
Thank you. We will get that question answered for you. Other member of the public? A longtime advocate of the creek.
Good evening again, Kathy Lishman. I see this really exciting that it's kind of the beginning of really starting to make changes to doing something important with the creek, to make it a real asset for the town. And Community Pride has always been interested in doing that. At one time, there was a creek committee and Pierre might know that there's a, the city even put money into developing a plan for it, but, and then things change. And I could see a bridge somewhere else in the creek, too. And water quality and improving the creek and really restoring the creek are important. But this is just the beginning and it's really exciting. And the things that are going to be part of this, if we get it, will really be an asset. And people will be excited and then they'll notice we have a creek.
Thank you, Kathy. We appreciate your comment. Is there any, any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I'll close public comment and I'll bring it back. We've heard from a couple of speakers and the interest is what potential water quality and creek bed restoration may become part of this project? Which staff member down there?
Let me start and then I'll let Terry and Rebecca add in there.
Thanks, Cleve.
This all started as, and I'm going to look at Councilmember Burelli because I know she's been pushing this for a long time. And yes, we are familiar with the plan that was referred to the, for Hangtown Creek that Kathy Lishman referred to, and that is part of our application. We will use that as an example of what is there. But it truly is, I see it and presented it as we talked to the El Dorado Water Agency as kind of a, a pilot program or a pilot example of what the creek could be that we would like to exemplify there. And it truly is restoration of the creek, not just the amenities that we've talked about, including the, the bridge and the seat wall. And there was also, I think you mentioned, the, the kiosk and educational kiosk that will help educate people of how they can maintain the creek and not pollute it, et cetera. But removing the invasive plant series that, that are in there and other things to restore the bank and make it more, better for, to prevent erosion and things like that. And, and, and then ultimately to look better. So it truly is a focal point for people to see in, in our city. The other thing just mentioned, and our city engineer can comment on this more, we do have a project we are currently working on to remove the sewer line from the creek. We've already let a contract with Drake Haglin, thank you, I had the second word but not the first one, to do that design work for that and that contract is in process now. So all of this is kind of coming together as one and it truly is to restore the creek and make it something that we can be proud of and look at. And then hopefully can continue into other areas other than just this one that we're talking about in the future. Rebecca or Terry, do you have anything to add?
Just, I wanted to highlight the actual name of the program that we're providing an application to. And that's the Riverine Stewardship Program for Urban Streams Restoration. So this really is a grant designated to creek restoration. And to, you know, echo Ms. Lishman's comments, you know, it really is, this is the beginning of a great start to making improvements to the creek, you know? It is a community asset. From a water quality standpoint, it benefits the community to make improvements to its waterways. It assists with drainage. It does add value to the community. And as far as the water quality aspect of it, absolutely, it will, it will be an improvement. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I, I left my brain back in 12.1. So I should have mentioned that the central focus is for stream restoration and I have been working on and reviewing the, we're in the Upper American River watershed area. And so I'm looking at past plans that have been put together for removing invasive species and adding water quality. So yeah, that's a central piece that should have been mentioned in the original staff report discussion.
Thank you, Jerry. Welcome back. Back up to 12.5, yeah?
Mr. Saragosa? Yeah, I just have a quick question for Rebecca. And I think, I think we talked about the, I think we just, it's one I didn't like. I think the contract that I voted against. But is there any way to leverage that now? I mean, if we were to be successful in getting this, is there, are there any possibilities of leveraging these funds to help with that bigger project that we have in terms of the sewer lines through there?
Yeah, I mean, anytime we have these kind of projects where they're one, you know, right next to each other and the sewer and the creek restoration is a great example. It's an opportunity to do a more complete project. And, you know, by removing the sewer line out of the creek, you give the opportunity to have a better approach to restoration of the creek, too. I mean, it's just kind of, it's just, one helps the other. As far as, you know, delivery, it does become more efficient that way, too, from a constructability standpoint. And then as far as funding, you know, the city is no stranger to tracking multiple funding sources on a project. And, you know, we can do so efficiently.
Great, thank you. All right. More other questions?
I'll move to adopt 12.5 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Taylor.
I would like a little bit of discussion.
Okay. Yes, please.
I have to tell you that I'm on my fourth term. And when I first came on board, Hangtown, doing something with Hangtown Creek was my dream. And I have been pushing for it for the last 12 years. Pierre Rivas was on the council at that time and Kathy, you noted, and, and at that time, we did have, we thought we were making a little bit of progress, but the funding just wasn't there. And every time we tried to do something, it was lack of funding. And I have gone on several of the Chamber of Commerce on their mission trips and every place we have gone, and I know some of the, the places we've gone is comparing orgies and apples, but they've always had a water feature. They've either had a stream or a river or a lake or something that was part of their rehab program. And I just, I am so excited over this grant, I cannot tell you. And I just hope and pray that we get it because I think this is, like Rebecca said, the beginning. We can just make it happen. It's just a little jewel just sitting up there. And there's, from all the things that I've learned on these trips, is that we, I've just got so many ideas that we, once we get this done, what, what more can be done? So I'm excited. I just wanted to tell everybody that.
Thank you, Patty. We appreciate your, your determination to see this, see to this point. Let's hope we are successful. So this is, but is there, yes, there was a motion. So this is a resolution, so I'll ask the clerk to call it all.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Burelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carries. And to echo Patty's excitement, Sutter Creek has been doing some things in their little creek. And they have a couple of brand new bridges. I told Cleve that he should get prices. As they've just successfully put two new bridges in. They worked with Caltrans to redo their, oh, I think the bridge got wiped out. But they have a very nice bridge now through Sutter Creek on High West, but what was Old Highway 49.
Yeah, I was just there on Sunday and it looks, it looks fantastic.
Really?
It looks great. And it's, you know, and it blends, as Patty, as you meant, you know, it blends in obviously to their whole features there. And it, it's a great, they did a really good job.
Kids are able to get down into the creek and investigate.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, and I saw several people that were with wet dogs and they said their dog had to go to the creek every day.
Oh, dear.
Anyway, we'll send Cleve over to get prices on the bridge. Or maybe we'll send Nick over to get prices on the bridge. Anyway, all right. Thank you very much, motion carries. We'll move on to 12.6. We've still got a lot of work to do. We are being asked for a small change in project funding with Michael Baker International. Who has the, who has the staff report? Mr. Rivas? Our city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Sir.
MBI is under contract to repair an environmental impact report in accordance with SEQA for the proposed Clay Street realignment and bridge replacement project. The draft EIR was circulated for public review on March 2 of last year with the comment period ending April 18 of last year. MBI is currently preparing the administrative draft final EIR, which includes the responses to comments received on the draft EIR that was circulated. Preliminary responses to the comments that'll be, that'll comprise the final EIR have already been provided to staff for review. Following the review of the administrative draft EIR, staff, city staff requested additional traffic analysis, editorial revisions, and reformatting modifications, which resulted in necessary changes to all the technical chapters and alternative analysis. At that time, a sufficient budget amount remained to cover those costs, including additional costs incurred by the subconsultant Fear and Peers for the additional traffic analysis. The scope and services for the Clay Street realignment and bridge replacement project has expanded since the original scope was developed and the funds remaining to complete the work would be insufficient to complete the work, meaning the final EIR and bringing that to council for certification. The number and complexity of the comments received were much greater than anticipated. In addition, the project has been delayed due to a greater involvement and coordination with state agencies to address comments regarding the evaluation of the project for potential impacts to cultural and historic resources. These additional cultural studies, although having been prepared for the NEPA environmental review as required through Caltrans, will be included in the final EIR in order to have a more complete document. Staff is also recommending that the term of the contract be extended through December 31 of 2020 and that the augmentation of $9,850 is justified in order to complete the remaining EIR tasks and prepare the final EIR for consideration by the city council. For, for further clarification, approximately $7,000 of this requested augmentation is to cover the additional traffic analysis that was initiated by Fear and Peers with the remaining $2,850 to cover additional work to be performed by MBI to complete the final EIR. And with that, staff has recommended that the council adopt the attached resolution to one, approve amendment number three to the consultant services agreement with Michael Baker International in an amount not to exceed $9,850 for additional traffic impact analysis and environmental documentation for the Clay Street realignment and bridge replacement project environmental impact report. And two, extending the term of said contract to December 31 of 2020. And then three, authorizing the city manager to execute said contract.
Mr. Rivas, thank you for a very complete report. Are there any questions from council for staff at this time?
One.
We have one.
Pierre, could you kind of just walk us through, and I know this might be generalizations to some, to some degree, but the time that the state and NEPA has had this, you know, had this in their hands, is, how long have they been reviewing it?
So when you say the state's reviewing it, you mean Caltrans?
Caltrans, yes.
Yeah. Basically, a lot of delay of late has to do with the NEPA documents. So it's not, it's not necessarily involved with, with our secret process. But because of the nature of some of the comments that have been raised by both the local Indian tribe and Friends of Historic Main Street, it was felt that additional evaluation was necessary to look at the, you know, the totality of the impact the project may have in the historic district as a whole. In other words, is the Main Street area eligible for, for be, for, for being included in the National Historic Register? And so under, under NEPA, there is that presumption of that eligibility. And so it was necessary to do some augmentation and reevaluation of both cultural and historic studies that were prepared in order to address that. And that was done through the subconsultant, the subconsultant under Drake Haglin, Par Consulting, which is the cultural resources subconsultant that was preparing those studies. So that's been going back and forth between Caltrans, of course, city staff, and Chipo, the State Historic Preservation Officer, so that everybody's on board with, with those additional evaluations. And of course, there were requests made by some of the commentors to be involved in the review of some of those studies. So once again, it has been prolonging that evaluation process. But staff feels it's providing for a more accurate and adequate review of these concerns. And then also in, in consultation with both city staff and our consulting attorneys and the city attorney, it was felt necessary, prudent, I should say, to include these additional studies in the secret document, the EIR, just to make it a more adequate document. Because basically, the, what, what the EIR will provide the council is a disclosure document of all the impacts associated with the project so you can make a more educated decision on the project when it comes before you.
Thank you. And then did we have any, do we have any sway over the time NEPA takes to, you know, look at this?
We do not. That was outside of city's staff's purview.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing, hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on this item and invite any member of the public that wishes to address the council on 12.6. Additional consulting services agreement?
Yeah, hi, Jennifer Chapman, Placerville resident. I guess I mostly, I have questions, but I guess I will make the comment because I, first of all, it's Friends of Historic Hangtown, not Friends of Historic Main Street. I know you know that. But we've been talking a lot about Main Street. So, and, and the eligibility assumption is actually not NEPA. The eligibility assumption is, is apparently in the programmatic agreement between Chipo and Caltrans. So anyway, it, but it, it's just, it is complex and there are a lot of resources. And I'm surprised because, you know, this seems like a very small amount of money. Certainly, I mean, the, you know, when Friends of Historic Hangtown was even trying to consider bringing in a consultant to start even looking at historic district, I mean, it was sounding like they wouldn't even touch it for, you know, more than this amount of money, more like $12,000 from the one person, one first person that we talked to that, you know, we didn't have that kind of money, so they were not going to be involved. But anyway, so I'm thinking, well, I'm confused about the money because it seems like you're extending out, you know, more than a year and this is a small amount of money. And, and so I still don't see where the real money for the real cultural and historic studies is. Because it, it seems like a lot of it has been relying on assumptions that still need to do a lot more work behind that. So they, I don't think they've talked about, you're going to assume eligibility for this district, that it's eligible for the National Historic Register, but you haven't yet stated which historic context you're looking at. And that means, you know, in order to even evaluate the significance of the resources or the significance of the impacts, you have to say, what is the historic context that we're looking at? And there's so many. There's, you know, there's obviously the gold rush, there's, you know, mining, there's transportation, there's Native American displacement, there's a lot of communication, you know, the Pony Express, you know, the Lincoln Highway, all these different things that, you know, are very much centered in and around, you know, just that area, that, that whole Main Street corridor, creek corridor, Southern Pacific corridor. Anyway, so I guess I just wanted to say that sounds like a really small amount of money and then a long window of time. And so I guess the other question, I don't know if you can just respond to this, is if it's going out to December 2020, is that saying that you're anticipating that the, the final EIR will not be out until that point?
We'll see if we can, we will get those questions answered.
Just trying to understand. But I, and I guess just to kind of close on this, I really believe that this, in terms of the NEPA, is going to need an environmental impact statement, which the first step of that is going to be to go, you know, make a notice in the federal register and start a whole other process. I know that they're trying with NEPA, they're trying to just do an environmental assessment and say there's no significant, finding of no significant impact. But I don't, I don't see how with the amount of resources there that you, for NEPA, which is the National Environmental Review, dealing with the National Historic Preservation Act, I don't see how you're going to get to be able to not do a full environmental impact statement with a full range of alternatives. But I guess we'll wait and see how it, how it unfolds. But I really appreciate that you are taking time with the comments and taking time with more review. And, you know, I And, you know, I know that Caltrans was, I mean, they were feeling, and Chipo just has so much backed up, you know, that's the problem, is there's so much review, obviously projects all over the state, so it is unfortunate that it takes so much time. But I think, as far as I know, it's been sitting just with Chipo since May, so, but anyway, hopefully, and we had, we had to keep asking and asking and asking, that was the other thing, is in order to get, you know, the comments as a consulting party, it took a while to actually get the opportunity to look at the draft document, so that was also part of the thing that took some time. But anyway, so I'm looking forward to seeing more of the historic cultural studies. Thanks.
Anybody, any other member of the public wish to address? I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. There were a couple of questions here we need to answer, and I think probably the big one is, when we expect the release of the, of the EIR?
Well, as part of this request, staff is requesting that you just extend the contract to, you know, basically another year and four months extension. This will be the third extension of time. I think each extension is extended at about a year. We're anticipating, hopefully, we can get the final EIR to the council in January, at least that's sort of our target date. But then again, we have, you know, moving target, so I hate to, you know, give a firm date, but we're confident that we're going to get it probably within that window, probably just, you know, wait till after Christmas and bring that item to you. Much of the comments of the speaker were not germane to this item. They were speaking to earlier staff reports that have been brought to the council, previous augmentations, and if the council feels that appropriate, I think our city engineer, Ms. Neves, can address those. There was an augmentation made some time ago of an amount of some $200,000 for additional environmental work to cover the NEPA part of it, that would cover the additional cultural and historic resources. So what's before you is basically to complete the EIR. So that's why I'm saying a lot of what was said is not germane to this. So this is not covering additional historical or cultural review. That's done under another contract with Drake Haglin and Drake Haglin's sub. So what, what you're approving here, again, is the, you know, the $9,000 some odd dollars. $7,000 of that is already to cover work that was performed, previously performed by Fear &amp; Peers, when the city requested additional traffic studies that were in response to comments received on the draft EIR. And then there's just an additional $2,850 to cover some of the additional work then by the consultant to complete the final EIR, and to include any additional studies that are being performed under the Drake Haglin contract, where you've already augmented and appropriated funding for that work separate from this. I hope that's...
Mr. Yvaz, thank you very much, and I think it would probably be the concern of the council to stay focused on the item that's before us this evening. And I will go ahead, and if there's no questions, if somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll move, I'll move for approval of Amendment Number Three. I'll second.
Been moved by Councilmember Borelli, seconded by Councilmember Taylor. This is a doc, this is a dollar, so I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Right, motion carries. And thank you very much, Mr. Yvaz, for your dedication in shepherding this project along over a number of years now. We look forward to successful and a complete and thorough review is so very important. Moving on to Item 12.7, adopting a resolution to approve the closure of Main Street from Bedford Avenue to just west of Cedar Ravine on September 7th from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Mr. Zeller?
Good evening, council. In front of you is a resolution, and it's focused on the Winderlust event, and that is on September 7th this year. The original application was for closure of the streets as was in the past, and that was from Main Street, or on Main Street from Sacramento to Bedford. But then the applicant came back and looked at doing a different road closure to try to mix it up a little bit for the 2019 year. And the new location was Main Street from Bedford to just, just west of Cedar Ravine. Staff signed off on it, it went to public safety, and the concern came up on restricting the area around Cedar Ravine because of the access to Marshall Medical Center. So this was discussed with the applicant, and termination was made to close Main, just west of the Cedar Ravine intersection of Druid Monument with a movable barrier, which would be a public works dump truck that could be moved in case of a need to access Cedar Ravine from within the event location. That would be things that were heading eastbound. Traffic heading westbound on Main would still have an unimpeded flow to left turn onto Cedar Ravine before, during, and after the event. So in essence, the resolution before you is, because of the change of the venue, and it's for the closure at the time specified from 4:00 to 10:00, from Bedford to just west of Cedar Ravine.
Thank you, Terry. Any questions for staff? I have one. What'll be the access to Clay Street in Main? Will I be able to get to Clay Street?
I believe that that road will probably be closed. I believe that they talked about just having it closed by Cosmica Cafe.
So we have...
Okay, so there goes a whole bunch of my friends.
The down, this is, this has happened before, and it's happened a few times before, where we have closed the stretch of the street off. And it worked successfully, and it's a, and it's the PDA's attempt to, to move the event from Main Street up to here, where they can have a little more control of the crowd because of the alcohol that's going to be served and such. So, you know, it's their desire to, to at least give that a try. There, this is a new relationship with the El Grande County Wine, Wine, Wine Association? Yeah, so that's, so I think, I think it's a good thing.
Any questions for staff? All right, I'm going to open public comment to the item. Any member of the public wish to address the council? Seeing no one approaching the podium, close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion.
I think we need to talk about Highway 50. At, at least this is on a Saturday, not Sunday afternoon, so hopefully it won't be as bad. And are we going to close off the ability?
It is the same event, just, yeah, so it's an event that was already in, that we have already been doing.
And we've had a lot of backups, right?
Right, yeah, and, and they have reduced the number of events during this time period to, to help eliminate those issues.
For the Highway 50, so that's what I was, that's where I was going with this, is to, and then they're, what part of Highway, are we going to keep people from coming in off of Highway 50? Coming in on to?
You mean up on, like up on Broadway and et cetera? No, that's not the intent.
So they would have, then where do they egress? I mean, if they came in on Broadway?
Well, they could go back in on, on, if they're westbound, they could get back on on Mosquito Road.
So they just do this?
Or, or if they come, if they make it all the way down to Cedar Ravine, they would be pushed up around over Pacific Street.
That's what I was wondering, what kind of a bottleneck that's going to cause.
I bet if we put signs up that said detour ahead, they may not want to get on Main Street.
Maybe we should do that often.
Okay.
Let's see, I've gone ahead and done that and done that, so here we are, ready to discuss this. I'm just concerned about not being, the Clay Street neighborhood gets impacted, and that street's going to be blocked off.
They have other roads in and out, though.
Okay, well, they do and they don't. It's pretty important right in there. They got to go all the way around and deal with the signals.
They can go the other way. They can go up on, in the back way.
And what are we going to do, have, Joe's going to have the keys to the dump truck hidden under the floor mat, so if we need to jump in and move it? And the visor, okay. Well, you see, well, you used to hide them under the floor mat.
Is somebody going to sit in that dump truck?
I'll, I'll be out there for the event, because it's a new location for me, and I want to see the impact of that area and the crowd that it draws, so I will actually be out there assisting the officers at road closures.
I'll volunteer to move the, the truck.
The dump truck?
Yeah, let, let me do that.
Free wine.
I, I just, I really am concerned we're going to have a huge congestion up there on that corner. And I, I just wonder...
When's the last time we did this? I'm trying to figure the gauge.
The Brew Fest, a couple of years ago, we headed all the way up to, all the way from all of Maine and all the way up.
Yeah, I remember having that, the Lot by Tortilla Flats, that was all brewer, breweries and bands. Ah, okay.
It's been recent.
I'm just, yeah, my question was, is to gauge what the economy was, because with the Tahoe traffic that we're getting now, and it's starting to spread to the days of the week.
Yeah, there's no...
Patty has not got Caltrans to fix the highway yet, so they have not added that third lane.
Yeah.
It's, thing that I'm worried about, it's getting really dicey to be able to safely close this street, like we've been doing for generations. And again, everybody's here now. Nobody's here in the audience, unfortunately, those, all those folks that were so concerned about Main Street aren't here now. But this is going to spread for basically half a day.
Well, it's just a constant discussion about the congestion on Highway 50, and this does not help.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know what the answer is, quite frankly. I just, I don't know, can we have extra patrol out there to tell the people to move on and, you know, help them out? I don't know. We, we can't stop the wayspeople from ever, you know, and I know that that's a big bugaboo.
So if I got off, excuse me, Patty, if I got off Bed, Eastbound 50 and Bedford turn to go to Main Street, I would be able to go down, just, I'd have to go westbound?
Correct.
And, so, so that internet section would still be working?
Yes.
Okay.
It's shut down just east of Bedford, right where the old DA's office is, is where the road closure is.
Could the event be held where the farmer's market is? Because it's outside of, I mean, four, five, there long gone.
Oh, along the creek?
No.
No?
Not enough room, probably, yeah, yeah, for what they're looking at. I understand they have two bands set up for this, and that's probably not a large enough. The one, the one thought that I had was, if the council wanted to, we could try and work with the arts, or with, with the association to...
Wine Association.
The Wine Association, and, and PDA. You know, maybe we'll look at requiring them to put up a, where they called Rebecca, the flashing, the message signs, message signs on Highway 50 that there's event on Main Street, do not exit, something like that, or, you know, up above Chanel School Road, somewhere in that area, to hopefully help. I mean, again, those that have the, their phones and follow directions, that may not help, but that could be something.
Don't those signs say congestion, or, I've seen like morning kind of, you know, caution.
Well, you, you can have them say whatever you want to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can, I'm talking about the programmable ones, that you can have whatever message you want.
I think that's a good idea.
Maybe something like that. I, I do know that this is somewhat of an experiment, joining with the PDA and the Wine Association. I will say that I think they're quite a ways along. Obviously, this is coming up pretty quick.
I have no objection to, you know, to the event, it's just that, like Mark said, times are changing, and, and we've got to start, I think we have to start changing. This just is just, I, I hope it doesn't, I, I hope it's just, everybody gets through and there's no, you know, but, I don't know.
To move this along in good faith, I think we would want to approve it, and then maybe think about considering the future discussion about road closures.
And that's, and that's fine with me, but I just, but I wanted to daylight this, because we, we need to do something.
The, the problem that, that, first of all, I think it's good that the Wine Roars Association or Wine Association is interested in working with our Main Street, and be interested in working with Placerville, I think that's huge. That's, that's a year-round industry, as opposed to the apple, apples and the Christmas trees and the pumpkins. It's a sophisticated group of tourists. Someday we'll have hotels. And then we absolutely won't be able to close Main Street. But the realities of this, and again, this is kind of maybe with the relationship that we have with PDA, I can go along Main Street and get a whole different set of input than they'll get from Main Street. The impact to, to most of our restaurants that bring in significant dollars with closing Main Street is huge. When I'll ask, I'll ask a business owner, "Well, then, why did you sign the petition?" I say, "Well, I don't want those people in my business creating, creating any controversy or creating a scene. I don't want an argument." So I just get them out the door as quick as I can. So that's, that's kind of a harsh, different reality of closing Main Street, and that's the traditional Bedford to Sacramento Street closure that we've dealt with for so long. I'm getting increasing complaints about the farmer's market on Wednesdays spreading out more and more, earlier and earlier, taking stalls away. Mr. Warren, how much sales tax do we bring in on produce items?
None.
Thank you, sir. And on wine? And on restaurants, food? Never mind.
A lot more than that.
But my point is made. You know, we need to get our priorities, and we need to get PDA in here, you know, I think we're almost have to do this now, because this has been brought to us so late. But I think we really, I'll be happy to come down and keep an eye on what goes on. Joe, you and I are writing together. And see what goes on, because it really is getting, with the Tahoe regional traffic and our own economy doing so well, we need to have some really good facts for what we are going to agree to next year for these road closures, because it's just getting crazy.
Well, I, I think Kara was hitting on it, too, to find some other place to have these events, other than closing Main Street. We, we just, we just really have to concentrate on, on doing that.
But I do agree with Dennis that, you know, we should, we should move this forward.
Oh, I do, too. I wouldn't deny it now, no way.
But I do think that we should have stipulations about signage, either build it into the cost of the application, what our cost would be to have that signage, or have it be on the PDA or otherwise.
I agree.
But Nick, how much does it cost to run a changeable message sign? For three days?
One day.
I'll look into that, get back to you.
Huh? Okay. You don't know?
Not off the top of my head.
Oh, man. Google it.
$1,800, I'm told.
Thank you.
$1,800?
For three days.
For one sign?
For one sign.
Wow.
Yeah, they're not cheap, so, yeah, this would change their whole, PDA would be, I think we'd, if we want to ask two or three of those changeable message signs, I'd just move back to close the bells, are...
Even if we had one coming, you know, westbound.
And we're probably too late in it to go back to them and ask them to provide changeable message signs? Mr. Morris? Mr. Zeller? Is it too late to ask that?
Well...
To make that a condition of this?
That's up to the council.
That's a lot of money.
That is a lot of money.
Oh, yeah.
There may be an opportunity for, there are certain people that have those signs, maybe a donation might come work with the Wine Association, but I don't know that for sure. I, I'm looking at Councilmember Thomas a little bit, because he's been involved with them in the past and knows what the budget is, and I, I kind of know it's very restricted on these events, but...
The budgets are tight, and I think, and I think it's, I don't want to use the word disingenuous, but it'd be difficult to come back to them at this late stage.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, they, there was some expectation that we've done this before, we could do it again from the merchants, and so this, bringing this forward at this time, and at the late date to do something like that, I think would be challenging for them to budget. I mean, they, they've already worked this all out.
Okay, that poses, that raises a question, how did this change get to us so late?
That's...
Well, they, there was an assumption on...
Let me, let me have Steph ask, answer that question, Dennis, because it's obvious that you're very much in favor of moving this forward, and that's fine, but how did, how did this change occur, come to us so late?
I got here on the 22nd of April, and I believe that that was approved fairly quickly after I got here.
And as you know...
You're just now getting the street closure?
Well, what happened is, in the past, we haven't been bringing these to you. The reason, you know, it came to me, and I said, "We need to take this to council" because of change of location. I don't think the change of location necessarily is going to affect the Highway 50 traffic anymore.
No, I'm worried about internal traffic.
Right, right. And, well, and I'm not sure, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, I'm not sure it'll affect internal traffic any, anymore, any worse than, than the other location. But, you know, it, again, it's a little bit of a test. We did do it two years ago, but that was the entire stretch, so that's a little bit different than having it just in this, this location.
We just need to caution, we need to put the word out and caution in our books.
And, and I, just saying...
And, and I, just so, you know, I would be happy to sit down with PDA and, uh, and maybe the Wine Association together and say, you know, "Is there any way you could come up with, you know, this message board to encourage people not to get off?" And maybe they, maybe there is a way they can do it. Maybe not, maybe, make it mandatory, but request it, you know, out of a cooperative effort that they would consider.
They might have.
Yeah, and I think, uh, you know...
Maybe the Apple Hill people have some signs.
At this point, we absolutely have to move forward with this, because it would be very unprofessional to, to slap them with a several thousand dollar expense for messaging signs, or to not approve this. But I think it's also, we need to use this opportunity to document the impacts. Because it'll, if it's successful, they'll obviously be back. And I want them to be successful. But I also want the town to be able to function, too.
Well, this could turn out to be quite a, a, a high-profile event.
Yeah, and so then where do all those people park? And how do they get into the event? Because again, they're using, we don't have, uh...
Parking's not a problem. Attractions are a problem. So if they want to come, they will find a place to park.
Okay.
Sacramento, I mean, uh, Pacific Street.
It's getting late, and she wants to go home. Uh, I'm gonna ask you, so there's a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll move this resolution.
It's a resolution.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. I will ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Regina. The motion carries unanimously, and Joe, don't forget to pick me up. I'm gonna do some traffic studying.
Wear your helmet.
I will wear helmet. All right, 12.8, adopt a resolution approving agreement. Uh, let's see, Consulting Services with REY, I'm not going to read all of this. This is in regards to stabilization on Anonymity Lane, let's see, Limits Project. Ms. Neves.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. The city has been progressing with the utility coordination and design for the Mosquito Road project in advance of preparing, preparing to repave Mosquito Road. While conducting utility verification through pot-holing, the excavated soil indicated contamination with petroleum as discovered through material color and odor. This was found around the existing six-inch water main that is recommended for replacement. The water main replacement project is being designed in-house, and plans and specs are about 90%. To support the contract plans and specs, a soil management plan is needed utilizing the outline provided in staff's report. This task requires the expertise of outside staffs, available time and talents. REY Engineers is already under contract for design on the Mosquito Road pavement rehab project. And tonight's item is an amendment to that contract to support overall improvements needed on Mosquito Road. The water main project is on schedule to request council's permission to bid on September 10th, and the paving project will be brought forward to council for permission to bid in November. Water main construction is estimated to start in January, and repaving a Mosquito Road is scheduled for construction this spring. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report, and that concludes my verbal report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Neves. We appreciate your quick and thorough report. Are there any questions on the item, or staff? None? I'll go ahead and ask if there's, I'll open public comment, and ask if there is a member of the audience that would like to just comment on this item, 12.8. Our ongoing efforts to get poor old Mosquito Road fixed.
Oh, my goodness, those poor people.
Poor old Mosquito Road. I think that's where Murphy lives. He certainly has had a hand in this project.
One delay after another, huh?
One thing after another. If it's not PG&E, it's contaminated soil, so, and right around our water line. So, good thing we're replacing the water line here. And, uh, so, yeah, we need to do this.
All right, thank you, Sue. And I assume you were also representing the Measure H and L Committee, too, and you, there's a thumbs up. Okay, very good. All right, I'll go ahead and close public comment on the item, bring it back to the council for action. Would someone like to make a motion?
I have a question for Rebecca.
Yes, please.
Um, the contaminated soil. Um, I, and I read this, but I'm not sure that I'm really, have you determined where it's coming from? And are we gonna hold them accountable for some of this added expense? Tell me a story.
So, um, I mean, basically, the way it was discovered was, uh, we were doing utility verification. You know, we have these facility maps, and some of the information's accurate, and some of the information isn't. And so, it's always good practice to verify the actual depth and direction of utilities in the field prior to actually going out to construction and finding it the hard way. So, when they were excavating to verify, um, they dig about a six-inch hole and when they were to where they think the water main exists, and when they were digging, they got pretty deep. But what was the indication is that when soil's contaminated, it turns a lot darker in color, and it had a very distinct scent. And that led us to believing that it has contamination in it. That area has had some soil contamination in the past. And so, um, it could be additional, or it could be prior. Um, we're looking into the how and the where and the why. But in the interim, rather than, you know, going forward and trying to assign blame at this moment, we're trying to stay focused on delivering the project. It's clearly a high priority, not only for the city, but also for the community, and that's what we're focused on.
So, my, I'm, I know that there's auto shops up in that area, right?
There's also a fueling station, yes.
And there's the fuel station, EIDs across the street, and all these people, you know, could this been years past, like you say? You know, that all this may have...
And it was part of the old railroad corridor as well.
The railroad? There's a lot of factors feeding into it, so that's what I was... Okay, thank you.
I think a question, it's amazing what flows around under this town. Are there any other questions, or staff? Any, someone like to make a motion?
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And then, since it's dollar, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Actually, I have a quick question for the city engineer. How are we doing on getting the project cost from PG&E on the Mosquito?
On the Plasterville Station project?
Yeah.
Well, so, given some workload constraints with PG&E staffing, um, we've been successful if we can keep them focused on one task at a time.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we're actually moving with that direction. Um, we just got them to take care of our connection for our two lift stations. And now, we're moving our attention to Plasterville Station, and just, you know, we're trying to be patient and work well with them, too.
Kick them at the same time?
Yeah.
Keep kicking them. All right, thank you for that impromptu update.
Not kickers, but yeah.
I appreciate it. Kick harder, please. 12.9, adopt a resolution approving a construction contract with Doug and Doug Veercamp Engineering for the Center Street parking lot. Probably the most embarrassing parking lot in the city.
Oh, no, we've got it.
Yeah, no, no, and this is a top runner-upper. All right, staff report on that, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The proposed item before you this evening, if approved, would provide for a construction contract with Doug Veercamp General Engineering in the amount of $29,194. The work would include the grinding and overlay of approximately 5,380 square feet of asphalt in what is known as a small Center Street parking lot, located directly across from City Hall. It would also include striping of new parking stalls and approximately 80 feet of extruded concrete curb near the entrance of the parking lot, and to protect the city's water sampling station that's located in that area. Uh, the increase in project costs is due to staff discovering more failed asphalt than was originally anticipated, uh, when we met on site with the contractor. The increase in cost would be made up from budget appropriation from the downtown parking district and assigned fund balance. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nick. It's 110% failed. Hey, any questions for staff on this? Any member of the, I'll open public comment on the item. Any member of the public wish the thumbs up from Sue? Thank you. Closing public comment, bringing it back to the council. Questions or comments?
Are we gonna retain all the parking spaces that we currently have in that parking lot?
Shaking their heads.
Yes.
All right, and I had a question. Are we gonna do our best to trim or remove all that disgusting overgrowth along that fence? Those trees of heaven and...
Yes.
Because Joe and I can come down there again if we have to. Thank you. Is there any other questions, if someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move we adopt 12.9 as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Borelli. Thank you, Dennis. Uh, let's see, roll call vote.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
This is most excellent. We're gonna get a boulder. We'll talk later. 12.10 comes after 12.9. Authorize the mayor and the city manager to sign a letter to support for the El Dorado County Montez and Easton Mewaw Station. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, uh, a year ago, uh, the El Dorado Arts Council have asked us to support them in their application to the National Endowment for the Arts for a grant to assist in creation of a arts and culture district in the downtown area. And it was also to go towards the, uh, further investigation of the improvements for Historic City Hall, which was discussed earlier tonight on the agenda. I asked, uh, them to provide us with a better description of what their project was. Uh, and they, I think you have a, a, um, email that they provided, uh, was, I think, was handed out to you tonight, which basically said that the project is to help proceed with plans for Historic City Hall. So, uh, based on that information and the action that you took earlier tonight to not accept their proposal, it would appear to me that, uh, this would become a moot point to approve this letter at this point, and not, and not necessary, but, um, so...
You know, I'm kind of wondering, though, um, with the, I mean, they seem really strong in, you know, their beliefs and what they were, you know, proposing and stuff. Maybe they could find another place to, you know, to, to have what, what they were proposing for Old City Hall. So, maybe, maybe we ought to talk to them and see, you know, possibility of getting a grant to help them find another place. I, I'm, it's just a, what do you think?
We, I, I'm open to that, um, and I can check with them tomorrow. I know that their grant has to be submitted by the 20th.
Wow.
Also, they'd have to have...
So they have to have a place in two, oh, okay, that's not the work then.
So, well, I don't know that, well, I don't know what their, their grant application is. You know, it was very clear when the Arts Council requested what they're, what they wanted to do. Again, I asked them, "Can you give me a more description of what, uh, your application will be?" Their initial response was, "They would get it to me." And then, this email came in, I think just today, Regina? Is that right? That email came in just today from...
That's correct. It was shortly after 5:00.
Okay. So, anyway.
I just think this follows the, the trend that they have demonstrated throughout this whole process of not getting their things in on time.
And I agree, but I just thought, you know, if they need something to help them maybe at a future project or some, you know, um, that it, since they've already asked, um, you know, I don't know what they have in mind. I don't know what their future plans are, but, just a thought.
Well, and these are annual grants, correct? These are annual grants. So, I mean, I, I, I agree with Councilwoman Borelli. Um, I mean, it's likely not gonna be, you know, in the next 10 days, but if we want to have a conversation about the next cycle, you know, I, I don't see why not. We can do that. But, yeah, I, I think in this particular case, it's just, uh, doesn't make sense for us to do a letter on a...
Right.
All right, thank you. Uh, go ahead and open public comment on this item, and ask any member of the public. Seeing no one approach the podium, I'll close public comment on this, and bring it back to the council for action. Somebody like to make a motion? It's, it seems like it's, um...
Do we move to reject it, or what do we do?
A lack of emotion?
Excuse, that's just...
Can we just...
Yeah.
That's just...
No, no action?
District attorney?
Mr. Driscoll?
I think third option is probably, but you would not approve a letter of support at this time.
I move that we do not approve the letter of support at this time.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion to not approve a letter of this time, seconded by Councilmember Taylor. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 12.11. Adopt a resolution approving consulting agreement with REY in the mail, not to exceed $95,436 for Cedar Ravine sewer replacement. Mrs. Neves? Exciting project.
Yes, we love fixing sewers around here.
I know I do.
Uh, the Cedar Ravine Creek Sewer is a, a project that the city has made a priority to replace when funding became available. And thanks to the Plasterville residents, Measure L was passed, which allowed for project funding to become available. The existing sewer main runs down Cedar Ravine Creek and serves a number of residents along, and businesses, actually, along Cedar Ravine at the creek. In an initial assessment of replacing the sewer, it became apparent to staff that some evaluation in-depth would be needed to develop feasible solutions for relocation of the main, and specifically, the service connections that will cross the creek. Staff assessed the, uh, their workload and complexity of the project, and found that this project would progress more timely with the help of consultant services. Proposals from the city's on-call engineering lists were requested, and the city received one proposal from REY Engineers. The item before you is to start the scoping of where the, um, recommend, uh, excuse me, start the scoping of the project, where then the recommended direction of the project will be brought back to council for review and approval. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. Are there any questions for staff on this project? All right, I will go ahead and open a public comment on item 12.11. We're gonna run out of numbers here pretty quick.
Hopefully, we'll run out of time and be able to go home, too.
Is that a motion?
First, you gotta pass this one, though.
We gotta get this one done.
Yeah, this one we gotta do. This is a recommendation from the Measure L Committee that we do something about Cedar Ravine Creek, like get the sewer out of the creek. And in order to do that, you have to find out how you can do it so that it will actually work. So, you do have to do the preliminary work. So this is, this is a good step in the right direction. Great idea. Run a camera down it and see where it actually goes, because there's some pretty wild stuff in Cedar Ravine Creek that we don't want to be there.
Thank you, Sue. Uh, I'll go ahead and close public comment on the item, bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Would someone like to make a motion?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
When you only have one, I, I don't know if you even call it a bidder, or one person...
Proposal.
Proposal.
How do you, how do we assume that that $95,436 is the right amount?
Well, it started at a lot higher, for starts. Now, I mean, we, we basically, uh, and this is kind of where, um, I ask for the grace of trusting our judgment. Um, you know, I, I used to do consulting, and so, when we go through scope and fees, we go through them pretty thoroughly. And when we look like a task is either missing, or a task is heavy on hours, we certainly ask those pointed questions. And negotiations on, um, scope and fee is a project, every project experience. And negotiations on scope and fee is a project, every project experience on federally funded projects, and when we come back with the Upper Broadway Construction Management Contract, it is actually a requirement. So, we just make it part of our policy and procedures when we hire consultants. So, this, this particular contract started out, I believe, about 140, and looking at that, it was, you know, we were, it was going a little too far beyond us doing the actual assessment that we needed. And so, we said, you know, "Hold on, pump the brakes, we want to make sure that what we're going to be proposing is feasible." You know, we're going to need to be crossing either over the creek or under the creek with sewer services in that area, and so we needed to see, kind of mirroring Sue's comments, we have to see how we can accomplish that.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Good question, Dennis. Any other questions, comments, that someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Second?
Been moved and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. This brings us on to item 13, and given the hour that we're at, is there to be any objection if we skipped council member reports from other agencies?
Not at all, we can include that, and we've got two minutes.
What, you get done? All right.
The bewitching hour is...
Request for future agenda items. Believe it or not, I have one. Minutes to bring back the private sewer ordinance. It was something that we got started a couple of years ago, and then it got shelved. I just looked at a piece of property up on Country Club, the house was built in 1964. It's going to be a total re, it's a total gut job, and I'm sure it must have an Orangeburg sewer, which reminded me, it has everything else wrong with it, why not that? And it reminded me that in that neighborhood, there's been an awful lot of property that has changed hands, and because we haven't been able to get this ordinance, we've lost an opportunity to camera or make, make those property owners, sellers, provide us documents and improve their services as these properties have changed hands. So, the little light went on, and I went, "Oh, man, we need, there's, the real estate market, we're missing an awful lot of opportunities to fix problems that are feeding into our system." So, if Cleve can work with staff and see if that's possible, if the council concurs, see where we left that off.
Yep.
Anything else? Thank you very much, I appreciate your support on that. We have an item 15.1, a presentation and information regarding the homeless outreach or the hot team. And I think this is Chief Ortega's report, but we have them far more popular, Commander Wren here in the city. Heavy duty tonight.
This is a meeting that keeps on giving. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, Sue, and Chief Ortega, who I'm sure are watching and laughing. Several months back, we had a meeting with the sheriff's office specifically discussing merger with our hot team, us assigning an officer to collaborate with them. We realized that when we would do an operation, we would displace our homeless population into the county and vice versa. So, we thought, instead of continuing to play ping pong, we would get together and see if we couldn't find a better strategy to address these issues. So, we assigned Officer Addison Randall, who had previously been taking care of that task specifically for the city, to the hot team. A hot team consists of a sergeant, two deputy sheriffs, an analyst, and now Addison. What you see before you is just kind of a snapshot of the activities that were performed. I know it says June 1st, but realistically, it's more of a July because it took Addison about a month to get up to speed on the hot teams. Did you guys see, do you have this? So, you know, commanders love data, and I want to see that our efforts have a tangible success rate, so I asked the analyst to prepare a monthly report for me. So, the hope is you guys will get a copy of this, we'll forward it to our chain of command to city manager, and then he'll share it, giving you an idea of what our efforts are, more accurate numbers of the homeless population that we're coming across, and of course, some of the success stories. Just in July alone, we were able to remove three people from a homeless scenario and place them into live-in rehab, is what they needed. They were habitual substance abusers, and they weren't getting any better, so hot team intervened and was able to find a successful outcome for those folks. Nothing bothered us more than giving a best guess to the questions that were asked of us about our homeless population. So, what this does going forward is going to give us a more accurate glimpse of what we're doing, or what we're dealing with, and how to address it going forward. So, with that, I'll answer any questions.
Could you talk about the one, I think we've only had one, it was up Grocery Outlet parking lot?
Oh, the trailer, yeah, oh, sorry. The, so the hot team has a mobile, like a little mobile trailer command post type of thing. They call it Trailer Day, and there's another one coming up.
20th, I think.
Is it the 20th?
Yeah.
Of this month?
Yeah.
Yes. And I believe that's going to be up at Walmart. They're going to, their time is going to be split. You know, they'll be out in the county just outside the city, and then they'll have another day here in the city, so... But it's free for you guys to come check it out, I encourage you to, so you know what resources.
I would like to do that.
Yeah, for sure. City manager has the information.
I've got it, yeah.
I'll send it to you if you don't. But, yeah, please come on out and, you know, ask any questions.
So, you just have the one trailer to take care of all these?
Yeah, so the sheriff's department has a trailer, the hot team has a trailer, and then they call in county resources, mental health, HHSA, Marshall Hospital shows up, they light up candles there, so it's kind of like a, we set up a little triage center out in the parking lot, and we try to assist this population with whatever resources they're willing to engage in, so...
And how do you get the word out to the folks that need to be there?
They go out and, the hot team goes out and hands them flyers, contacts them on the phone. And it's part of the, it's part of the, also the enforcement strategy, right? So, we want to provide that resource to that population, or at least let them know that it's available to them. When they consistently contact persons who don't want to engage in those resources, then there needs to be a shift in kind of how you deal with them going forward, so that's when you get into more of a total enforcement type of activity where the police do the police things, so...
Thank you, Commander Wren. Is there any other questions?
No, I appreciate, that's okay, I appreciate the, that the city police has made the effort to coordinate and build those relationships with the sheriff's department to, to deal with this issue, because you're right, it's a ping pong game, and, and nobody's winning right now, including the homeless population that really needs the help. And I think this is, this is a long game project, it's not a, you find out how much you did in the first month because you're building relationships and working with these people, and they'll become accustomed to it, and it'll grow, and I do appreciate the efforts that the police department has put into making this work, so you can send that to the chief as well, thank you.
All right. I'll ask if there's any member of the public that wants to comment on the item. No one approaching the podium. All right, and this is just a received and filed. Congratulations on this, we look forward to seeing this information, it's very useful.
Some of the data may change, we just, the formatting of it, I'm working with the analysts to be able to provide, kind of makes sense of all of them.
Great, appreciate it.
Mayor, just one minute, that event is on August 20th, from 8:00 to noon, at 4,300 Missouri Flat. Is that the same location as last time, Joe, on Missouri Flat, do you know?
It's at Walmart, isn't it?
Is that Walmart? Okay. 4,300, so it'll be in that parking lot where they'll be this time, so...
And that's August 20th?
If you want to go out and visit, August 20th, next Tuesday, yes.
From what to what?
8:00 AM to noon. And I'll forward this announcement to you, so you have that.
Thank you, Cleve, and again, thank you, Commander Wren. Please pass our thanks on to the chief, who couldn't be here tonight. All right, upcoming, Mr. Warren, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Real quickly, during your budget deliberations, we spoke about coming back with a pension workshop to talk about the status of our pensions and ways of reducing our unfunded liability. So, we're, I talked to Mr. Morris, and we'd like to propose meeting on Wednesday, November 6th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, to talk about pensions. I was wondering if that would work with your schedules?
Wednesday, November 6th?
From 3:00 to 6:00 PM.
Gosh, I hope so.
3 to 6.
What day of the week is that? Wednesday?
It's Wednesday.
I'm tired, I need more coffee. I think, but...
Okay. We'll follow up with you with a reminder, and...
We will make that work for you.
If it doesn't stick, we can reschedule, but for now, thank you.
It's a very important topic.
Yes, it is.
All right, are there any other staff reports this evening? City manager report?
Welcome back.